Good afternoon, everyone. This January 17th, 2023 meeting of the Lake Oswego City Council is now called to order. Ms. Linder, will you please call the roll?
Mayor Buck.
Here.
Councillors Winland.
Here.
Mbo.
Yeah.
Verdic.
Here.
Rapp.
Here.
Corrigan.
Here.
And councillor Afkan is joining the Zoom.
Wonderful. Now, everyone, will you please stand, remove your hats, and join us in the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Hey, thank you, everyone, for coming out this afternoon. We're going to start the meeting with public comment. And some of you have been here before and know the routine, but for those of you who have not, when it is your turn for public comment, I'll call your name. Please come forward to the table. You can sit on either side. Public comment is limited to three minutes per person, and we have a little timer on the desk there. And there's three indicator lights. We'll kind of track your time as you go down. Please keep it to the three minutes so we can have as much time as possible for public comment. The entire duration of public comment will last only 30 minutes, so we'll have time for 10 folks. I know a lot of you here tonight, I think, pretty much everyone who has signed up to speak for public comment would like to speak about the same topic, which is the pickleball. And in addition to those of you who are here today, and of course, we receive lots of emails and such as well, and we appreciate everyone who is weighing in and providing their opinion and perspective. Okay, so we're going to start, though, we have one person on Zoom, so we'll start there, and that is Mr. Jack Hoffman.
Can you hear me now?
Jack? Yes, we can hear you.
Yes. Okay, hold on, continue.
We see you.
I think I'm okay now.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mayor Buck, councillors. Thank you for allowing me to share some perspective. Contrary to a lot of your beliefs, I'm not quite as old as George Rogers. But I'm in there. I know this decision is not an easy one. There are strong feelings and passions on each side. They each has different perspectives. The reason I sent that email to the council distribution last week was to provide perspective, the long-term perspective, because, in my opinion, it's easy to get caught up in the issue of the moment because of the intense pressure that is put on the city council. But I wanted to remind this city council that you're not the first city council to make a decision or the first to address the neighbors versus recreation users. You're not the first, and you won't be the last. But your one decision-making body, one decision-making session in a long line, very difficult decisions that other city councillors have decided before you. And you're, but I want to emphasize that you're not making the decision in a vacuum. Other councillors and city councillors have been faced with the same, you know, neighborhood versus recreation issue. But in the past consistently, the city of Lake Oswego, the city councillors, the recreation departments have all given great deference to neighborhood livability, neighborhood concerns. Not necessarily 100%, but it's been a great deference. Frankly, because Lake Oswego has a tradition of maintaining wherever possible neighborhood character and livability. A decision, typically, a decision, if they make a decision to give deference to the neighborhoods' concerns over recreation users, that would be consistent with Lake Oswego city policy going back many, many years. And your decision, if we're in this, whatever decision you make, will be a, will set the stage or be part of the direction that you're setting for city councillors to, that will follow in the future. In summary, my position is that neighborhood character and neighborhood livability are really part of the social fabric that keeps Lake Oswego together. People move to Lake Oswego not because necessarily to play pickleball, but as John Winland knows, because of schools, and because of other people know the livability of neighborhoods. So when they come, when they come to town, buy a new house, the first thing they don't ask is, where can I play pickleball? Where can I play softball or basketball? Their interest in schools and neighborhood livability. So it's a difficult decision, and again, I commend you for tackling this difficult decision. But again, you're not in a vacuum, and you're, you're far in a long line of decisions that other city councillors have made, so good luck, and thank you very much.
What a legacy. Thank you, Mr. Hoffman. I appreciate it. Okay, next is Bill Miller. Mr. Miller. Are you here? Oh, hi. Oh.
Good afternoon.
Hi. I just wanted to make a couple of observations about pickleball. The demographic for pickleball is skewed towards seniors. In Lake Oswego, I think I get that anecdotally. Nationally, there are studies where core pickleball players, that's people that play more than eight times a year, the core average age is 47 and a half years. The bulk of those people are 65 years or older. National study. So we're addressing with this pickleball court issue, I think also a senior Lake Oswego resident issue. How does pickleball help that? Well, there's a very social aspect to pickleball. I don't know how many of you played, but it's not like golf or four people walking down a fairway. There's a 36 people that sign up at a time. It's social when you're playing, and it's social when you're waiting to play. Recent studies, experts have proven that socialization among older adults may not only keeps the brain sharp, but it can decrease the risk of developing dementia and Alzheimer's. Next point is pickleball provides a lot of exercise. Like, we all know, exercise is a good thing at all ages, particularly good for seniors who don't have as much chance, who don't seem to take as much chance to get it. Recent study shows that middle-aged and older adults who play one hour of pickleball three days a week for six weeks improve their blood pressure, cholesterol, cardiorespiratory illness, and fitness levels. Lastly, I'd like to thank the city of Lake Oswego for parks and recreation developments they've made recently in senior developments, the improvement of the adult senior center, the indoor tennis courts, the new aquatic center and rec facility that's being built. I'll note that all those things are indoor activities. All the recent research says that just being outside promotes wellness, and it particularly promotes wellness for seniors. There's a study that says seniors who spend time outdoors may experience less depression and anxiety. Individuals who run, bike, or walk in natural cities, settings have a reduced risk of mental health problems compared to people who do their exercise inside. So I would like to note all those things as positives for pickleball. I'd like to make one final comment just about the process. Seems to me that I went to a forum, a lot of people said they wanted to represent everybody in the city. To me, a very minor minority of the city is controlling this decision.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Your time is up, but thank you very much. We appreciate you being here. Folks, folks, listen. Hey, there will be none of that. That's your one warning, okay? Dareth Lamka.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. I'm Dareth Lamka, and I am Neighborhood, Old Town Neighborhood Association Board Member. I also served on the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee last year. So today, I'm speaking on behalf of the Old Town Neighborhood Association, and we want to ask again that the courts at George Rogers be closed immediately for pickleball use and repainted to be used for tennis. We have been advocating for this closure for an entire year. We started discussing it in January. We all agree that pickleball is a wonderful sport for players. I play it, it's fun. It also creates a very jarring and loud noise that puts people living nearby on alert, like a car alarm, barking dog, or as one city leader described it, it's as if there are six drum sets in your garage, and people randomly and frequently come and bang the drums in an unsynchronized loud manner, laughing and leaving after their drumming sessions. As documented, the whack-whack-whack noise from pickleball is unbearable and physically and emotionally harmful to our neighbors who live as close as 42 feet from the courts. The national standard that the city's citizen pickleball task force members adopted is that the pickleball courts be 150 feet or farther away from the homes. At the meeting of the Neighborhood Association Chairs this month, councillor Afkan asked which neighbors, neighborhoods would like pickleball in their neighborhood. None. It's too loud. Please listen to the leaders who have recommended the city close the courts. That is the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, that is, that are medical doctors, that are sound engineers, two former mayors. You heard from Jack Hoffman, Judy Hammersted also wrote in a letter advocating to do this. And our current mayor Buck and councillor president Verdic have also recognized that neighborhood livability is more important than having these courts so badly placed next to the neighbors. So please vote to close the courts at GRP use today and the agony for our neighbors. Let's treat our neighbors living as close to the courts as we would want to be treated.
Thank you, Ms.
Let's not show up ever again.
Thank you, Ms. Lamka. Jenny Davies.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, councillors. My name is Jenny Davies. I am the Public and Environmental Health Director for a national environmental education nonprofit. I have an M.D. and a master's in public health. I'm also a licensed attorney with a J.D. in environmental law. Noise is defined in the public health literature as unwanted and/or harmful sound. Suburban noise is an environmental stressor in a public health problem. I first want to distinguish environmental noise from occupational noise. There's a little confusion in that area. Occupational noise, of course, is generated in a workplace. It can cause hearing loss, and for that reason is regulated by OSHA. Environmental noise is generated from outdoor activities, and unlike occupational noise, environmental noise causes health harms even at low sound levels. This is because it is chronic, persistent, and repetitive, and triggers the body's stress response. Environmental noise is linked to high blood pressure, heart attack, stroke, type 2 diabetes, obesity, and premature death. It also leads to cognitive impairment, disruption in sleep, irritability, depression, anxiety, exhaustion, and worsening of any pre-existing mental health vulnerabilities, and we all have them. Factors which increase the likelihood of harm are high pitch and the inability of the listener to control the noise. This is especially likely when environmental noise intrudes into a person's home, because a person has an expectation of privacy in their home and an expectation that they could create a peaceful and quiet environment, and an expectation that they can control that environment. So when environmental noise is chronic, persistent, repetitive, it triggers the body's stress responses. This means the release of stress hormones and the activation of the sympathetic nervous system known as the fight-or-flight response. Now, this stress response network is not designed to be kept at high alert for long periods of time. It's an emergency network, so when it is activated repeatedly over such long periods of time, you get a chain reaction and harmful effects, such as high blood pressure, elevated blood sugar, damage to the internal lining of the blood vessels, and, as I described, heart attacks, stroke, type 2 diabetes, obesity, and more. So it is a chronic, persistent, repetitive nature of environmental noise in combination with the noise level that causes the harm. And for this reason, governmental entities have begun to regulate environmental noise. Pickleball noise is high-pitched, measured at 70 decibels at 100 feet and 64 decibels at 200 feet. Europe and WHO recommend keeping daytime environmental noise levels under an average 50 to 55 decibels, and the peak noise under 65 to 70 decibels. Oregon DEQ, for industrial and commercial noise sources, nothing for recreational noise sources, but gives a framework, caps average daytime noise at 55 and peak noise at 75.
Thank you very much. We appreciate you being here. Thank you. David Dunne.
Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon.
Welcome.
I will. I'll take me a moment to get my little pile here. Got one of these in case you never saw one. These as well. Okay, I'm all set. And since we're throwing around our credentials, I'm David Dunne. You can call me Doctor, because I have a PhD from University of Illinois in Education. So I don't know if that increases my credibility or not, but there it is. I've lived here in Lake Oswego for 30 years or more, and I played pickleball at George Rogers for five years. And I'm in favor of keeping the courts at GRP for the following reasons. Pickleball is perhaps the fastest-growing sport in the nation, and Lake Oswego Parks and Rec should not be discouraging it, but rather should be promoting it. Two, there are few active sport activities appropriate for older folks. We don't play football, we don't play soccer, we don't play baseball, with a few exceptions, I imagine, all of which are supported on the sports field next to the pickleball courts. Now, on the subject of noise abatement, we're not the only community dealing with this issue. In 2017, for example, Sun City Grand in Arizona, a large residential community, published a list of approved and banned pickleball paddles based on how loud they were. So when I was out purchasing my paddle, my paddle was on the good list, and there are dozens of paddles like this. Also, there's quieter balls available, something which I don't know that you all researched. Penn 40, I have no stock, but Penn 40 has quiet balls. We've tried them out, they're quieter, a simple solution. Now, on the subject of location, oh my gosh. People who choose to live by a city park should not be shocked when there is noise coming from activities at the park, and should be in no position to demand that those activities cease. No one forced them to live by a city park. Similarly, when I bought my condo next to a heavily-used road in Mountain Park, where I still live, I should not be shocked at the traffic noise, and it would be absurd for me to be demanding that the cars and trucks take another route. And finally, as Star Trek's Mr. Spock so succinctly stated, "The needs of the many outweigh the needs of the few." That's it.
Thank you, Dr. Dunne.
Thank you.
Liz Banks, you are next.
Good afternoon. Thank you all, Mayor and councillors, for allowing me to speak. My name is Liz Banks, and I'm here to express my concerns regarding the ongoing discussions about George Rogers pickleball courts and our neighbors in Old Town. I started playing pickleball for the first time at Rogers in March of 2021 and have found an amazing community like no other. You've already heard numerous testimony regarding the mental, emotional, and physical benefits of having this community. Players were concerned to learn about our nearby Old Town neighbors and that they were disturbed by the court use, and as a club, we agreed compromises could be tried. Those compromises have included reduced hours of play by, we reduced them by 40 to 60%. We've reduced the number of scheduled signup slots with lower waitlist numbers. Players are encouraged to park in the established parking lots versus on the street adjacent to the courts, in spite of some parking lot break-ins. And then sound abatement walls were installed. Yet it feels the neighbors remain un mollified by all the attempts to collaborate, compromise, and address their complaints. I understand professional sound studies have been conducted twice, once before the abatement walls were installed and once after all four walls were installed. A third study, I think, would be prudent after the south wall was removed, as that allowed for escape of sound into the woods and parking lot, further reducing the reflected noise. Layperson decibel readings have shown that the noise level is significantly less and well within established codes for recreational sound. I'm also distressed that the task force used a 150-foot distance from residences as a guide for potential future pickleball locations. That anecdotal number was obtained from only four new park constructions across the United States, and it did not account for the many more parks that peacefully coexist in neighborhoods. Lastly, I'm worried about the implications of permanently closing the courts, as I feel like this would open the doors to closure for all venues that create sound. Venues that create nuisance sound include Midillennium Park summer concerts, LO Farmer's Markets bands, soccer games behind my house on the playing fields at Palisades Elementary. Please consider covering the courts at Rogers as discussed at previous council meetings to eliminate all sound for our Old Town neighbors. Thank you for considering these points, and please vote to keep the courts open.
Thank you, Ms. Banks. Bill Waters, you are next.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Mayor, council members. My name is Bill Waters. I have attended several city council meetings in the past six months due to this issue. The more I attend, the more disheartened I become. The meetings have become a microcosm of the horrendous political divide that outgrips our country. What is most disturbing is the complete lack of concessions or attempts to compromise on the part of the five Old Town neighbors across from George Rogers Park. They want the courts closed today, period. We pickleball players have endured court closures, locked gates, and offered many, many noise mitigation measures, even covering the entire courts. Have any of you heard any suggestions for compromise or collaboration from these neighbors? I have not heard one. Your decision to consider closing the courts should not be based on emotions. The 150-foot guideline is bogus, anecdotal, in that it's based on four distant cities with no real additional supportive details at all. We are happy to cite four cities where houses are adjacent to pickleball courts and their residents have no issues. For example, in Vancouver's Lincoln Elementary, players and courts and neighbors' houses share property lines, and they get along without issues. Please remember that using the 150-foot guideline lacks credibility in guiding your decision. Despite our repeated requests, Parks and Rec refuses to do a sound study to learn how effective the current three-pound, three-panel sound mediation modifications have worked. On what facts will you base your decision regarding the pickleball courts at George Rogers Park? It does not appear, it does not appear as if you make other council decisions based on emotion alone. Why this one? This situation has become a red herring, and it is now up to you to bring reality and rationality back to it. Please keep the pickleball courts in George Rogers Park open for the benefits of the hundreds of LO PAC tax players who use them. Is the number-one reason to live in LO still live where you play? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Waters. Roxana Stewart, you're next.
Good afternoon. I do believe I'll make this short. But everyone has already spoke very clearly on how we all feel about George Rogers Park remaining. I did have a concern with Ali Afkan being one of the people that would be voting on this on council. I feel that it's a conflict in interest, because he does, he is in Old Town. That I did want to bring up. The other thing that has already been brought up is also the amount of money that has already been poured into these beautiful courts. If we were to say, no more pickleball, that was all done in vain. The sound barrier is working, the electronic doors are working. I also feel that a lot of the heat from the Old Town came pre- I also feel that a lot of the heat from the Old Town came pre-all of these changes. During COVID, there wasn't that much. Before that, yes, there was a lot, and there was ongoing, ongoing. But when Parks and Rec stepped in and they were doing their programming, there was control, there was a Park and Rec, there was the LOPC Pickleball Club, there was the quiet hours for the neighbors. And as others have said, we have had a lot of compromise. Now, here's another little issue that I have found with many people that loved the programming from Park and Rec. I would hear from other pickleball players that were new. I'd be like, "Oh, hi, nice to meet you. How'd you hear about pickleball?" "Oh, we did one of the classes from Park and Rec. We love it." And then in return, "Where can we play in the winter?" Pickleballers have a little problem finding play in the winter, but that's our problem. But then again, to get all these people excited from programming from the Parks and Recs, and then where are they going to play if you close the facility that they found pickleball at? So I'm here to request that you would not close George Rogers Park. And again, we have had a lot of compromise from our side, the neighbors. It's not that I'm in, that I don't have compassion for them. But if I was a neighbor that lived across the street from a park, because mind you, I do live across the street from George Rogers, I'm just over State Street. And I think I might invest in some earplugs if it's going to put that much pain into my system. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stewart. Abou Schoolbo, you're next.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Hi.
Sorry, I opened this thing up. I am here representing Dr. Steve Mandelblatt. And I'm reading a letter to him. This is, I've spoken to him many times, but I'm here reading his letter. "To the Honorable City Council Members, I am retired primary care internal medicine physician with over thirty-four years of experience. The general medical community has come to recognize that mental health concerns are an underlying contributing issue that may be obvious, but more commonly hidden in about thirty percent of patients with a variety of complaints walking through the door to see a PCP. Although I do not live in the neighborhood, I have recently become aware of the issues facing city council regarding the noise levels at pickleball courts at George Rogers Park, which led me to read both medical and layman's literature about the ubiqueness nature, tough word, of concern regarding exposure to these noise levels nationally. I've experienced these levels both in the past when pickleball was a new sport and recently as I was evaluating this issue for myself. I'm writing to give this, to give my opinion that it is the nature of the sound, of the impact of a racket to ball, high pitch, staccato, irregularity, repetitive, coupled with the number of daily hours of this intrusive noise, that reasonably is the cause why so many neighborhoods nationally have registered their concerns. Such noise exposure could well cause a normal, healthy human to experience stress ranging from tolerable to extreme. This stress may manifest as clinical anxiety and/or depression with sleep and mood changes. I would expect many to most humans to be negatively affected by noise exposure of this nature. This effect on the mental health of the neighboring residences cannot be dismissed, in my opinion. I urge the council to be cognizant of these issues when deciding further mitigation efforts to address or reduce these noise concerns. Thank you for your consideration. Steve Mandelblatt, MD." And just a quick one to all these people. I've lived there for over thirty years. I loved all the sound. Pickleball's different, everybody. It is not like tennis, it's not like soccer, it's not like music. It is exactly as people are saying. It's very intrusive into the mind. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Globo. Thomas Laffarelli, you are next.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor.
Good afternoon.
To the council people, how are you?
Good. Welcome. It doesn't matter. Yeah, welcome.
Yeah, I just wanted to echo, I'm a pickleball player. Last couple months, moved here fifteen months ago to the beautiful city of Lake Oswego, and really happy that George Rogers Park provides a lot of things besides pickleball. It's got a baseball field, a beach close by, hiking trails. You also have to think about, as a city council, the economic impact here too, because when that many people gather that often, not just the Park and Rec's classes, but the pickleball clubs, a lot of times they eat lunch afterwards, they go shopping afterwards in the downtown area close to the park. That puts a lot of money, a lot of tax money into the, into the community. So you've got to look at it from that point as well. Also, we talk about noise levels. Everyone's talking about this doctor and that doctor and decibel levels. What's the decibel level of a pickleball at the lowest level with the right kind of paddles and the right kind of balls versus the air blowers that the gardeners use to blow leaves around? Because that, you can hear, you know, down the street a lot of times. I mean, that's much more loud. I can't even hear it. I don't have the greatest hearing in the world at sixty-eight years old. But when I drive up, a lot of times I'm not even sure if anyone's playing because I can't hear it. I have to kind of look, look in to see if anybody's there. If there's a lot of cars there, I figure maybe there is, but I don't hear it from, you know, thirty feet away. So I don't know how many houses, are there three or four or five houses within a hundred-and-fifty feet? I'm sure they have double-pane windows. I don't understand. I'd love to do a study, and you go inside some of these houses, and we'll put every court, we'll fill every court out there and see how, see what you're going to hear. Because when I'm playing, I don't even hear the other courts. To be honest with you, you're just focused on your courts. This is where, like people say, this is the greatest kind of a club, you know, the people are nice, courteous. If you're not as good as they are, they'll play down to your level, or they'll show you, you know, some things. It's very courteous. Like they said, when you're on the court and when you're off the court, you get to meet people. It's a great meeting place. We've had picnics at different places. So it's a real community thing, and one thing we lack, you know, sometimes Americans is, you know, we don't know who lives three doors down. This is a really good community activity. Good bonding, no matter what your race, religion, or political affiliation is. It's just, it's such a great thing. I've been in a lot of organizations and played a lot of sports, but this, it's a great thing for, and I play a lot of sports too, so I don't just play pickleball. But it's a great, it's a quick learning curve. It's, the competitive juices, like you said, the exercise, the aerobics, the cardiovascular. And it's a beautiful place to play. In that park, there's so many, so many things. And I just think it would be a tragedy, you know, for a few disgruntled neighbors who knew they lived next to a park, or they moved next to a park. You know, there's ways, like I said, there's studies and there's ways to make it quieter, you know.
Thank you, Mr. Laffarelli.
We're not, we're a pretty well-endowed community. Yeah, we could afford, you know, to do some things that some other communities can't. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Thanks for being here this afternoon. And Debbie Sanchez. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Hi.
I'm excited. I made the cut.
You did.
Good afternoon. My name is Debbie Sanchez, and I'm a member of the Lake Oswego Pickleball Club. I've attended city council meetings in the most recent several months regarding discussions of the future of the pickleball courts at George Rogers. One constant theme I realize is the lack of awareness of the mission statement for the Lake Oswego Parks and Recreation Department. There are two sentences in the mission statement that keep resonating with me and make me realize that the Park and Recreation Department is not adhering to their mission statement. A mission statement provides an organization with clear and effective guide for making decisions. As stated in the first line of the Lake Oswego Parks and Recreation Department mission statement, it states, "Lake Oswego Parks and Recreation achieves its mission by providing a variety of recreation, education, and human service programs that contribute to the health and well-being of people of all ages and abilities." The second statement states, "Promoting and expanding community partnerships and opportunities for civic engagement that leverages resources to meet the changing demands for recreation, human services, and natural area preservation." On the front page of the Park and Recreation website, the following paragraph is written. "Living well in Lake Oswego is a health and wellness initiative that is based on the six dimensions of wellness, and Lake Oswego Parks and Recreation is committed to providing excellence in Parks and Recreation services to enhance the livability of Lake Oswego. The six dimensions are: physical wellness, intellectual wellness, spiritual wellness, environmental wellness, social interpersonal wellness, and emotional wellness. Any member of the Lake Oswego Pickleball Club can affirm that playing pickleball at George Rogers meets the six dimensions of wellness. As a member of the city council, you have heard many community members present facts, datas, personal experience, but my question to you, when you vote for the future of the pickleball courts at George Rogers, ask yourself, are we standing behind the mission statement that we have committed for our community? Remember that a mission statement provides an organization with a clear and effective guide for making a decision, and I hope that you will pay attention to that when you're making your decision. Thank you for your time."
Thank you, Ms. Sanchez. And thank you, everyone who came with public comment, everyone who submitted comments via email. We appreciate everyone providing their perspective, ideas, and otherwise on this topic. With that, we are done with our time for public comment, and we're going to move on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda today includes items 5.1 through 5.3. We have Resolution 23-02. This is a resolution creating an ad hoc library advisory, or excuse me, ad hoc library visioning committee. Item 5.2 accepts the 2022 council goals fourth quarter update. And item 5.3 is approval of our meeting minutes from November 1 and November 14. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
Move to adopt the consent agenda.
Second. All right. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right. Motion passes seven-zero. Okay, we now have two public hearings before us. First is on, oh, excuse me, yes. We have a council-only consent. Thank you, Councilor. For council's only consideration, we have Resolution 23-03. This is a resolution approving appointments to the library visioning committee that we just formed. Is there a motion to adopt Resolution 23-03? All right. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. That motion passes six-zero. All right. Now we'll move into the public hearings. We have two public hearings. The first is on Ordinance 2909. This is an ordinance amending LOC Chapter 50 for purposes of clarifying and updating various provisions. And we will start with a review of the legislative hearing procedure by Evan Boone.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a legislative decision, which is generally a policy decision within the discretion of the city council. Although a legislative decision may be discretionary, it must also comply with applicable state law as well as any applicable statewide planning goal or administrative rule adopted pursuant to ORS Chapter 197. A legislative amendment to the zoning code, development code, or development standards must also comply with applicable provisions of Lake Oswego Conference of Plan. The public hearing process will begin with a presentation by staff, then testimony will be received from the public. Individuals allowed up to five minutes. Recognized neighborhood associations, homeowner associations, government or government agencies, or other incorporated public interest organizations will be allowed up to ten minutes. Those time limits do not include time spent responding to questions by the council or responses from the council to those questions, or by the persons. Any person attendance may cede. Here's your time for testimony to another person, but in any case, but in no case shall a person's testimony be increased to greater than ten minutes. At this point, I would ask the council members to please declare if you have any financial conflicts of interest. If any person needed to declare financial conflict of interest.
No.
Hearing none? Then Senior Planner Johanna Hasty with a staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Boone. Johanna Hasty, Senior Planner with Planning and Building Services. I am here tonight to present the annual code amendments for 2022. I do not have any additional written testimony or any other exhibits to add to the record. So a quick overview on the schedule. As you can see, we're nearing the end of this process. We're at the public hearing, the city council public hearing today, and I believe that the direction is to return with findings on February 7. So we have brought forward seventeen maintenance amendments and then six additional policy amendments. Maintenance amendments are generally code fixes, minor changes to language. All of those amendments, the seventeen maintenance amendments and six policy amendments, have been found to be in compliance with comprehensive plan goals and policies as outlined in the Planning Commission's staff report for that public hearing. The commission did not have any substantial comments or revisions to those maintenance amendments. So with the council's permission, unless there are any that you would like to discuss tonight, I'd like to focus the primary amount of my time on the actual policy amendments. Are there any questions about those seventeen maintenance amendments, or shall we move forward?
Move forward.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so the first policy amendment deals with the building design standards, and that's LOC 50.06.001. Specifically, the building design standards that pertain to non-single-family home or middle housing design. These are standards that apply to multifamily, to commercial, and also to institutional uses. The code currently requires that those sort of structures be located within thirty feet of a public street. And over the past several years, basically the last past decade, with all of the public projects from the city and also the school projects, we've noticed that a number of them have had to incorporate a major variance or a hardship variance into the project in order to get some flexibility to that standard. And this is due to the fact that a lot of these institutional uses, the site design is not compatible with having the building closer to the street than, say, public parking, bus circulation, drop-off, pickup for parents, things like that. So staff proposed to the Planning Commission, and the Planning Commission is recommending that we introduce an amendment for institutional uses, basically structures in the PF, the Public Functions, and the Parks and Natural Area, the PNA zones, that there be a waiver if the applicant can show that there's a conflict with an operational need. This would avoid the cost and the extra process associated with a major variance. The Planning Commission did talk about alternatives, like potentially looking at the major variances and seeing if there was a range of distances that could be, work with this issue or address this issue. We also looked at an average. And all of those numbers that we came up with were fairly arbitrary and didn't address the basic problem, which is each of these institutional uses have different needs that come up, very unique to that project, very unique to that site. And it really should be a matter of some flexibility allowed to get to the best site design necessary without that kind of blanket requirement to be located within thirty feet. So the Planning Commission is recommending the amendment as written, and again, it's a waiver if there's an operational conflict. Any questions about this?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
The second policy amendment has to do with noise-producing mechanical units. This includes HVAC units, heat pumps, generators, things of that nature. We've been working on trying to standardize and make the regulations regarding these units, at least the locational regulations regarding these units, as efficient as possible. And this is for review. It's also for permitting purposes. So a couple of years ago, we adopted a standard side and rear setback. So you would have to comply with whatever front yard setback was a part of the zone. So like a standard low-density would be a twenty-five-foot front yard setback. But then for mechanical units, it wouldn't be based on the zone that you were in. It would just be a five-foot side yard setback and a ten-foot rear. And that was great because that made everything standard, to repeat that point. Unfortunately, what we did see is that there was a conflict with certain zones and then planned development subdivisions that might have reduced setbacks. They might have less setbacks than that. And so you were left with a situation where there wasn't sufficient ability or flexibility to locate these units on the site. And then you're, you know, looking at minor variances and, you know, struggling with contractors and property owners or dealing, worst-case scenario, with code violations, which nobody wants to do. So this is a really basic fix. Basically, this says lesser of, either that standard five-foot side and ten-foot rear or the underlying zone. So RW is an example of an underlying zone with less setbacks or those planned developments, which are very numerous. Any questions about that? To clarify, the Planning Commission did recommend adoption as written. Any questions?
What if the setbacks are just not because of an underlying zone, but because of a, you know, existing non-conforming use or a variance they would have sought to?
So I can tell you that a replacement unit, so like-for-like, same size, same location, is allowed. That's just maintaining an existing nonconformity. That's how we've dealt with this issue with permits that have come through. Any new or like bigger units have to meet the underlying ones. I don't know, maybe this pro temp city attorney can talk about variances. I believe that this, in the case of a site that had a minor variance, to say a side yard setback for a primary structure, that would not apply to an accessory unit of this nature. It would be subject to the standard setback of five-foot side and ten-foot rear or whatever the underlying zone was. Does that address your question?
So legally, if the current structure is legally non-conforming, they could still cite, they could use that?
They could replace it, like-for-like. They could replace it, like-for-like.
Even if they're, but let's say there is no, they're, you know, retrofitting the house, they're adding the unit for the first time.
They would have to comply with these standards, as currently written and as we're proposing to amend.
But would that comply with the standard? No?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, if, if, so let me clarify. If they had a unit on the site.
Let's say there's two feet. If two, there's no unit. Well, no, no, two feet's unreasonable. Let's say four feet.
Yeah. If the HVAC unit is four feet from a side property line and, say, 11 feet from a rear, they could replace it like-for-like, as long as it wasn't bigger.
But if it was, they're not replacing it. They don't have it yet. It's brand new.
Okay. That, that would not be considered a replacement unit. It would be considered a new unit, subject to these regulations.
So what I'm asking is if, if, if the structure has a setback lower than five feet because it's legally non-conforming?
So you're talking about the primary structure itself? No. These are new accessory structures, so it doesn't matter what the primary structure, what its non-conforming setbacks might be. The accessory structure separate from the primary unit is, is subject to a different review.
So it's just accessory structures?
Yes. These are noise-producing accessory units or accessory structures.
Okay. Accessory, okay.
Accessory, like mechanical units, so.
Okay.
So you could have a.
An accessory structure? Yeah, it is like an ADU.
No. So again, these are noise-producing, this regulation is specific, the language is specific, noise-producing mechanical units. So a garage is a structure.
Okay. But attached to the primary structure?
No.
Attached to an accessory structure?
Mechanical unit is, is by code, by building code, has to be separated from a structure.
Right.
So I'm not talking about the things that go in the walls. I can't remember what those are, those are called combined units or something like that. So I'm talking about on ground.
Right.
You create a little concrete pad, you place your HVAC unit. Yeah, like an HVAC unit.
Okay.
So this, this regulation is specific to noise-producing mechanical units only.
Right.
If you have a garage or an ADU, there is a separate code section that deals with height, setbacks, lot coverage, all of that.
Right. I guess what I'm asking is if you have, you know what I'm saying? Like.
Yeah.
What he's asking. So if you have an existing law, a legally existing non-conforming structure.
Yes.
And you want to put a new unit on.
Noise-producing.
Noise. So you're remodeling your legally existing nonconformity, and all of a sudden you decide you want AC.
Sure.
I assume those units could go through a variance process here.
If you wanted to, but this regulation is for if you want to just comply and get your permit without going through the variance process.
So you couldn't, you couldn't put one on the side of your, you couldn't put an AC unit on the side of your legally existing nonconforming use without a variance.
Gotcha. Okay. So you'd have to go through the variance.
Yeah. So structures are separate, are subject to different setbacks than these noise-producing mechanical units, nonconforming or not.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions about this?
Counselor Afghan on Zoom has a question.
Okay, thank you.
That, that question sort of answered my question, but can a homeowner give a minor variance on these mechanical unit setbacks?
You can apply for a minor variance to these, but again, that is a separate process. A minor variance process is a land use application. This code regulation is for people who want to just cite these units without going through any sort of land use application or variance process.
Understood. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else? Any questions or concerns about this actual amendment?
No, we're good.
Okay. Thank you. The third policy amendment to discuss tonight talks about, is dealing with patios and their proximity to property lines. So currently, the code says that there is a three-foot setback between, there is a required three-foot setback between patios and all property lines. And that's there to ensure ease of installation of construction of these patios, to allow for ongoing maintenance of the patios, and also to deal with stormwater runoff. So you have a little bit of area between the impervious surface and the property line to deal with stormwater runoff. And that has been something that staff has been enforcing for decades. Closer review of this regulation, the city attorney's office found out that there's actually a problem with the language. It's called a setback, a three-foot setback. Setbacks only apply to structures. An at-grade patio is not a structure. So basically, what we're doing is we're fixing the language there to codify staff's longstanding practice of implementing this as a setback, but now we're calling it an offset so we can get around that legal issue with the language. This amendment also allows patios in the Oswego Lake setback, again, in keeping with longstanding practice. Right now, it's not listed, but it's similar to, we have considered it similar to how decks are allowed in the Oswego Lake setback, and so we're just updating the code to implement longstanding practice. So patios will still have been and will still be subject to a three-foot separation between their edge and the property line and will be allowed in the Oswego Lake setback. Any questions about that?
Looks good.
Okay, thank you. Okay, this fourth policy amendment actually came up in two different ways. We have heard from developers in our overlays with bigger projects that they would like to use. A lot of them have used engineered and composite wood, but in two of our overlays along Boone Stray Road and Cruzway, and that's the Lake Grove Village Center overlay and also the West Lake Grove Design District, those overlays and design districts do not allow the use of engineered or composite wood, and this is, I'm sorry, as exterior cladding. If you want to use wood as exterior cladding, you have to use real wood, and I'll use quotation marks around that, because there's all sorts of wood that can be used that is not engineered or composite, but it can be kind of specialized. In any case, there was an effort before the pandemic from some community advocates, and this included representatives from neighborhood associations, from the business association, and the, some developers, to look at these two overlays and, from, come from a couple of different angles. One, to look at, look at the public improvements along Boone Stray Road and ensure that they were in keeping with each other. And then also, there was an effort to kind of look at sustainability issues within these overlays, and this happened to be one of them. They figured it was time to look at that prohibition against engineered and composite wood to see if that was still necessary. So that community-led effort stalled. I'm not sure where they are in their process, but we figured it would be timely to bring this forward as a part of the annual code amendments. And so the Planning Commission did request that staff do some research into this. I also did some outreach with local developers and architects and designers that I've worked with. And basically, the consensus is that over the past 10 or 15 years, this product has definitely improved in quality and appearance, which is one of the major, was one of the major concerns about this and probably one of the reasons why it was included in the prohibited materials list. It is also, from my research and from outreach, that I've received a very cost-effective product, much more so than real wood, real wood again. And it's also a lot more durable when it comes to pest resistance, fire, water damage, things like that. Again, assuming proper installation and maintenance, which, you know, some of the common issues that you have with real wood as well. So the commanding, Planning Commission did debate the pros and cons of this, and we, like I said, directed staff to do some deeper research on it, but they are recommending this amendment as written to first allow this material, these, these types of materials in the two overlays that I've discussed, but also to ensure there's consistent language where it's allowed throughout the rest of the code, and that includes some, it's some overlays and other overlays in design districts. So any questions about that one?
Well, is this just pertinent to shingles?
No. So it's any, any type of exterior cladding where it is listed as a wood product, so horizontal lap siding, board and batten, tongue and groove, shingles, anything like that, you could use the engineered or composite equivalent to it.
Oh, that's good. Good update.
And the image before you tonight, I think anyone who's familiar with the building industry could probably distinguish between the real and fake wood project or engineered or composite wood. But I think it's important to understand, again, that the quality of these materials have definitely improved over the past decade at least and are now very comparable to real wood.
Absolutely.
Any concerns or questions before we move on?
Do we, do we have standards as far as the quality of, I mean, like a minimum quality?
That's a good question and one that the Planning Commission also raised. So in the Lake Grove Village Center and West Lake Grove Design Districts, we do have a very robust review process. Both of those overlays come with very strict design standards with regards to the type of siding, exterior claddings that is used, and what architectural styles are allowed. And of course, with any sort of project like this, they go through a public review. So staff would review it and be brought to the Development Review Commission for review as well with the allowance for public comment on it. So the regulations do enforce quality of appearance and design, and then if there is any discussion or debate about that, which of course it's a very subjective issue, that those issues can be raised as a part of the public process for the project.
So it's a case-by-case basis to say whether you're using cheap, cheap materials or not?
We do also require material color and materials boards, so we do get an idea of what sort of product they're going to use, and staff is, just through our experience, is trained in figuring out which products are more likely to be problematic than others. But again, what we've seen very consistently in my 18 years of working for the city is that most of these projects, I can't even think of a project that wasn't very focused on quality, appearance, and design.
Right.
This, with the amount of investment in these projects, trying to figure out a polite way to say, cheaping out, cheapening out on materials is not the common direction.
Right. No, I'm just looking at, we're supposed to be clear and objective, right? In anything that we do, and one of the things, like the roofing industry has certain standards that they put in where it's X number of pounds per square foot type thing that a lot of communities and homeowner associations and so on put in a minimum, you can, you can do anything that you want on the pallet as long as it meets these minimum standards. And I just want to make sure that, you know, we have at least a minimum standard so that we keep the different projects, you know, of similar quality. That makes sense. And this will allow it or not? It's not really.
This amendment does not include any sort of minimum standard.
Okay.
These are by nature subjective design discussions. The Lake Grove Village Center is technically clear, entirely clear and objective. I don't know that, looking at it, again, from the planning perspective, from a project planner perspective, I would say that there is qualities in real wood that are also kind of subjective, like you can use bad wood.
Right.
Just like you could use bad composite or engineered wood. There is a list of prohibited materials, like for instance, in both of these overlays, you cannot use T-111, which is a bad quality, real wood product.
Right.
So those prohibited materials lists continue. This basically just says where you could use a type of real wood exterior cladding, you could substitute engineered or composite, but there are no minimum standards like you would have in a building code or industry-wise.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other additional questions, or shall I move on?
Move on.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
The fifth policy amendment is with, regarding accessory dwelling units or ADUs. When this amendment first came forward, staff was focused on just clarifying the language with regards to what variances were allowed and how to implement the zone dimensional standards. In reading the, the regulations, staff felt that there could be some clarifications there. But then with the middle housing projects and the expansion of housing types and the way that middle housing is regulated in the city, staff also thought it might be appropriate to revisit accessory dwelling units and the, the number of, or the type of variances that are allowed with ADUs. So this amendment would first clarify that there is still a prohibition on major variances and all design variances with regards to locating an ADU on a site. It is not a hardship or a major variance to not be able to get an ADU on the site that wouldn't comply with his own dimensional standards, for instance, and it's also not a design issue. You either have the ability to locate the ADU on the site or you don't. Currently, the ADU regulations do allow for some, a minor variance to some of the ADU design-specific standards, and that would be like the location of the door, the front door, the windowsill height, standards that are in place specifically to try to offset any might, like minor impacts to a neighbor. What this amendment would do then, in, along with clarifying which variances are prohibited, again, major and design variances, would expand the list slightly for major, minor variances. Sorry, I get all wrapped up in the different variances. So major and design, no. Minor variances, you can get a few right now. This would expand it to include some zone dimensional standards that you could get minor variances to. That would be like a 20% reduction to a setback. If you had double the lot size, you might get a little additional floor area. So if, if we have a site where you've bumped up against your maximum floor area, and so you can't have an ADU on the site, if you had double the minimum lot size, now you could. Or if, because of proximity requirements between, or separation between an accessory structure and a primary structure, you couldn't locate the ADU on the site, now you could look at a 20% reduction to that setback in order to be able to locate the ADU. So it's a small expansion of the allowed variances, minor variances for ADUs, but this was the one policy amendment that did receive public testimony at the Planning Commission hearing. We did hear from the chair from Lonac, the Lake Oswego Neighborhood Association Coalition. They, they were in favor of the clarification on no major or design variances, but they requested that the Planning Commission not move forward or not recommend the expansion to the minor variances to allow the 20% reduction to setbacks or possible floor area increase. So I just wanted to pass that on in case you hadn't seen that in the public record. So I'm happy to answer any questions about this one.
Good. Looks good.
Okay, thank you. The last policy amendment, I think an image speaks a thousand words. In the uplands overlay, they have a regulation that says for any lot, you're allowed only one access point, one driveway access point. And that is different from a lot of the other residential properties in that if you have 75 feet of contiguous frontage, you're allowed a second access point, so you could have a circular driveway, but not in the uplands overlay. That was one of the characteristics of their neighborhood, the large front yards without a lot of impervious area that they wanted to preserve. Inadvertently, what that meant was this real-life scenario, which was a minor partition I approved in 2020, where the applicant, the property owner, wanted to keep the existing home up front, but the garage serving that home was located on the opposite side, the garage and driveway was located on the opposite side of the property than the access lane that would be serving that flag lot. So unfortunately, they had to consolidate the driveways into this one access point leading to a lot of impervious area across the front yard and a, in their minds and in the property, in applicant's, property owner and applicant's mind, a ridiculous result. So working with the uplands neighborhood, basically, we talked about different concerns and different ways to address this issue rather than a major variance, forcing an applicant to go through a major variance process. And they did agree, in very limited circumstances, a second access point would be allowed, and those circumstances are a minor variance with a flag lot, and the prohibition on circular driveways would still be in place. So they are happy with this amendment because it doesn't result in this and still gets to the neighborhood character that they're trying to preserve. So any questions on that one?
So it's a minor variance?
There's no minor variance allowed. It's a, it's a built-in exception to the actual code language. So you would not have to, with, actually, okay, let me, let me revisit that. So this scenario, this situation only arises during a partition process and a partition that included a flag lot that would have to have an access lane. So this would be a land use application where before you would have had to request a major variance, not a minor variance, a major variance to the standard, you would have to show that there was an unreasonable hardship on your property. In this scenario, I couldn't approve or support a major variance because they did find a way around it. They found a way to obtain reasonable use on their property, so they were stuck with this design. So what this amendment does is build into the overlay an exception to this, this particular uplands overlay regulation so that I didn't have to impose this design as a requirement as part of my petition.
I see. But they'd still be seeking a variance.
They would still be seeking a partition, but they wouldn't also have to seek a major variance.
Okay, minor variance.
Major variance.
No. Neither. No variance.
No variance necessary.
Just allowed outright with the partition?
Yes, in certain circumstances.
In these circumstances.
Yeah. Basically, this circumstance, where you have a garage and a driveway on the opposite side of where you provide your access lane. It's really the only scenario where I can see this happening again, which hopefully is not a common scenario, but with the desire to preserve existing housing, it could come up again.
Okay. Any questions? Good. Okay, thank you.
I sufficiently answered that? You're not?
Yeah, it's good.
Thank you. All right, so that is it with the policy amendments to discuss tonight. So that is it with the policy amendments to discuss tonight. The Planning Commission did recommend that the council adopt ordinance 2909 with attachments as it is consistent with the comprehensive plan goals and policies. With that, if you have any final questions, I'm happy to answer them.
That is great. Thank you. Anyone have any questions? Go ahead. Counselor Willman?
This is...
Yeah.
We'll discuss that.
Okay. Any other questions? No. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. Good work. We will now open the, open the public hearing. I'll ask if there's anyone, anyone to testify?
No, Mayor.
Okay. Is there anyone here who'd like to testify? Okay. We're going to close the hearing. Would someone like to make a motion?
I'd like to move to tentatively approve ordinance 2909 and direct staff to return on February 7th, 2023 with a final version of the ordinance, including findings and conclusions.
Second.
Okay. And discussion? Counselor Willman?
I would just like to commend and tell the, all kinds of people that have been involved in this process, a big thank you. The Planning Commission has spent a lot of time on, on this. This is truly in the weeds type of work, and the whole planning staff has done a great job of articulating it very well. And I feel it's a win for the Lake, the residents of Lake Oswego because we've, most of these are making it more efficient to go through the process. And I think that's a big step forward for this community, and I think we need to continue to do that as we look at policy. So anyway, I just want to say that all this is really detail-oriented, and it's a lot of work.
It's great.
And I appreciate them doing it.
Roger that.
Not us.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Afghan, do you have something?
No. My question was answered. Thank you so much.
Wonderful. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Let's go ahead and take the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All right. Any opposed? Okay. Motion passes seven zero. Thank you, Ms. Haste. Thank you very much, and thank you to the Planning Commission. Okay. Next, we have our hearing on ordinance 2918. This is an ordinance vacating a portion of Hazel Road located at the most westerly end thereof. And we will, again, start with a review of the hearing procedure by Mr. Boone.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a street vacation decision. Although the decision is within the discretion of City Council, a decision to approve the street vacation must comply with ORS 271080, no, excuse me, 271110 and 130 and 120. The public hearing process will begin with a presentation by staff. Testimony will then be received from the public first by persons in favor, then persons opposed, then persons not in favor or against, and then any rebuttal by staff. The time for testimony would be 10 minutes for representatives of recognized neighborhood associations, homeowner associations, government agencies, or other incorporated public interest organizations, and five minutes per individual. The time limits not include time by questions from the council or responses to the questions. Does any counselor need to declare an expartee contact, bias, or financial conflict of interest?
No. None?
Hearing none. Erica Rooney, City Engineer and Public Works Director.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Counselors. I'm Erica Rooney, as mentioned. We're here before you today for a very procedural activity, housekeeping, basically to vacate a portion of Hazel Road near the high school, Lake Oswego High School. We were in front of some of you back in December, December 20th, where we adopted, you adopted resolution 2238, which gave us direction to move forward with noticing and holding this public hearing in order to vacate the right-of-way in compliance with ORS 271, as mentioned by Mr. Boone. So really, I don't have any PowerPoint for you this evening. This is extremely procedural. It's in compliance with our goals and objectives when we are vacating right-of-way because we don't do that lightly. We want to make sure that all of our infrastructure, our underground infrastructure is accommodated for and that by vacating, we don't preclude something happening in the future that would be to the public benefit. In this case, this is a lot of housekeeping, working with the Lake Oswego School District to vacate a portion of right-of-way that they currently use and seems to act and work as a private piece of property. It clears up that area at the end of Hazel as it comes into the backside of the school district, or to the high school site. So really, there's, there's not anything out of the ordinary about this or anything different or special. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Specifically, Exhibits Two of ordinance 2918, which is part of your packet, shows the exact surveyed area that will be vacated. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Could you just tell us a little bit about the turnaround access easement?
Yes. What that allows us for is physically, no one will see anything different than what's out there today. It's just giving us permission to allow the public to turn around like they do now.
Just that little pieces there.
Yeah. It won't be physically any different than what you see today and how it operates. So we made that arrangement with the school district as a part of their conditional use for, I think it's LU 22-0016. And again, everything will operate the same way that it is today. Nobody will know the difference.
Very good.
It's a paper exercise.
Questions? Any questions? Okay.
Okay.
Thank you so much. That's great. All right. We will then open the public hearing on this street vacation. Do we have anyone to testify?
No, Mayor.
Anyone want to testify on this? Okay. We'll close the public hearing. Would someone like to make a motion to adopt this ordinance?
I'll move to an act ordinance 2918. Second.
All right. Is there any discussion? All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. Hearing none. That motion passes seven zero. Wonderful. Thank you, Director Rooney. Okay. We are, before we move to item 8.3, we're just going to take a quick five-minute break.
All right, everyone, we're going to get started here again, come back into order. Next up on the agenda is the appeal of the Development Review Commission's approval of a Type II tree removal application. This is AP 22-06. We will start with a review of the quasi judicial hearing procedure by Mr. Boone.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and of course, if the council and the audience will bear with me, this is a long one for the process. The appeal, this is an appeal of the Development Review Commission decision regarding a tree removal application pursuant to LOC 5502-085 subsection four. The hearing before the City Council shall follow the requirements of that code section and, as incorporated, the procedures are set forth in 5007-037DFH through N and O I and four, I through four, subsections I through four. The hearing shall be on the record established before the DRC. This means no new evidence may be presented to the hearing except per ORS, per LOC 5007-037HI triple I. However, enlargements, illustrations, maps, and other exhibits may be submitted, as long as they're part of the record or were entirely derived from evidence in the record. I should add, I think it's appropriate, that the deadline for submission of any written materials was noon today, so no new written materials may be submitted at this time. No issue may be raised on appeal to the council that was not raised with sufficient specificity to enable the commission and the parties to respond before the commission. Only parties who appeared before the DRC, the commission orally or in writing, may testify. This is a quasi judicial appeal hearing to determine, based upon the evidence and the testimony in the record, whether or not the application complies with the criteria contained in ORS 5502-080. Testimony and evidence must be directed towards the applicable criteria. We ask that you identify to the council the criteria standards you're addressing, so the council can consider your testimony in relation to that criteria or standards. The time for testimony is limited. There'll be 15 minutes for the, let's see, yeah, 15 minutes for the applicant's presentation, 15 minutes for the appellant's presentation. If there's more than one appellant, then it's a total of 15 minutes. Then 10, and then 10 minutes for representatives, recognized neighborhood associations, homeowner associations, government or government agencies, or other incorporated public interest organizations. Five minutes for each other person, and five minutes for the app, for the appellant's rebuttal. Any person in attendance may cede his or her time for testimony to the, to a representative or another person, and thereby increase that represent, excuse, any person in attendance may cede the time for testimony to a representative or to another person, but in no case shall any person's testimony be increased to greater than 10 minutes. No person may cede his or her time for testimony to the applicant or to the appellant. These time limits do not include time spent resolving objections to or questions or responses to questions from the council. The order of presentation begins first with a presentation by staff. Then, staff has received some written testimony that staff believes contains new evidence, and so will then resolve those objections by identifying them and providing an opportunity for those persons to testify and say why they're not new evidence. Council will then make a decision on that before proceeding. Then, testimony limited those persons who appeared before the commission will be received, submitted in the following order. First, the appellant, then by testimony by those persons in favor of the appeal, followed by persons in opposition to the appeal, beginning with the applicant, and concluding with rebuttal by the appellant. If, following deliberation, a motion is made to approve the application with conditions stated in the motion, before the vote, the applicant may raise constitutional issues related to the motion's proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the City Council to respond to the issue. Failure to do so precludes an action for damages in Circuit Court. Finally, at this point, I would ask the council members to please declare if you've had any ex parte contacts, including a site visit, if you have any bias on consideration of this application, and any financial conflicts of interest.
I have bias.
All right. Counselor McGee, you're declaring bias, and therefore, as a result, you will abstain from the considerations. Thank you. You can, if you wish, you can leave the dais. That way you won't be, but you can stay there too, but you could also leave a dais while this is going on. Anybody else need to declare ex parte contacts, bias, or financial conflicts of interest? Hearing none?
No.
Is there any challenge to a counselor's right to consider the application? Hearing none, then we're ready for the staff report with Associate Planner Daphne Sissel.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. My name is Daphne Sissel, Associate Planner for the City and Staff Coordinator for this tree removal application. Jessica Newmonaloo, Deputy Community Development Director, is also in attendance. She can help answer questions if needed after my presentation. Before I can begin, I'd like to introduce Exhibits F-005, which was submitted on behalf of the applicant, and Exhibits G through, G 227 through G 232, which were received in opposition to the tree removal. These exhibits were sent to you this afternoon. They were received today. Exhibits G 228 through 232 included what we believe is new testimony, and council was emailed these with the highlighted portions that we thought was new testimony. And as City Attorney Pro Tem Evan Boone mentioned, you guys will need to rule on those individually, specifically.
Okay. Did you want to proceed with the rest of your overview, and then we'll go to the exhibits?
We can do this now, and then I'll just, yeah.
Okay, all right. All right, so let's start with G 228. G 228 is a submission by Mr. Pullman, correct? Is Mr. Pullman present? Mark Pullman? All right. Have you received the identified material that was, that staff identified as being, as containing new evidence, not in the record?
Yes.
And did you wish to come forward and provide to us a citation where the materials in your second, well, the last paragraph are in the record?
Yes.
Okay, you may do so now. To be clear, this is, this is not to argue the case. This is just to identify where in the record the highlighted materials in the exhibit are.
Sir, the only-
Please sit. So, some people are watching on television and can't hear.
The only piece that was, that was included in the original written testimony to the DRC was the update of the number of trees that had been removed in 2022, back when the DRC was meeting. That 2022 had not completed yet. So I then went through and just took a look at those, those numbers. I updated those. The other three, three sentences, I added, as I learned that you were presented with the LiDAR tree survey last month, and I read through that, and that had some pertinent information there. However, and I'm assuming that DRC also had that information, but it was not included in my letter. No.
Well, then, to that point, then, the information about what was in, in the urban canopy, as you, in the LiDAR map, was not presented in this record. The council may have seen it in other, in the other submission by the plant, by the planning department, but the urban forestry report is not part of this record, and the council should not consider that.
Right.
So-
Can I object to that?
No.
No, okay.
I mean, it's either in the record or it's not in the record. The question is, was it in the record before the Development Review Commission? It's not.
Okay.
Okay, I mean, and then updating tree number counts? Again, that was not in the record before the DRC, so I'm asking, where in the record can you point to where that information is found?
There was a number in 2022, up to November, of the number of trees that had been removed. I updated it with the December numbers.
Well, that, that's, that's my, I guess that's the point, is that-
Then we can discuss the up to November numbers.
Yes, yes, okay, all right. All right, thank you. Anything else, any other material, you think?
The other three were discussing the forest, forest trees survey and how that applied here.
Okay, all right, well, then, Mr. Mayor and the council, then, based upon the testimony, I didn't hear anything that he indicated was in the record. So I think a motion to strike the, I think, I think the, in Exhibit G 228, the first highlight relates to the term reasonable. I think that's, that's argument, not new evidence. But the highlights in the last paragraph would be, I think, staff, I would say they should be stricken.
Okay, we'll move to strike the highlights in the last paragraph on Exhibit G 228.
Second.
Okay, yeah, any, all those in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously, or six zero.
All right, then, next we come to Exhibit G 229, and that was submitted by Sharon Gusterson. Is Sharon Gusterson present?
I'm here.
Okay, staff identified the, I can't tell you how you count it, third paragraph relating to variances as being new testimony, new evidence. Do you-
I don't call it evidence, but it is not.
Okay, all right, then, for the record, then, a quick motion and second to do so.
Okay, we'll move that we strike the highlighted portion of G 229.
Second.
All right, oh, yeah, all those in, yeah, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, passes, six zero.
Thank you. Next, we have Exhibit G 230 by Betsy Wasco. Is Betsy Wasco present?
Yeah.
All right, staff has provided to you, thank you for coming forward, staff has provided to you the highlighted provisions. There's, I think, the highlighted provision in the second paragraph about other types of tree removal applications. That is argument, not new evidence, and of course, it's in the code. So I think staff withdraws that, okay? So we're focusing then on the highlighted material that is the top of Page Two, which again is talking about number of trees removed in the LiDAR report. And so, you heard that previous conversation?
I did hear it, but I would ask the council to take administrative notice of these facts. They were, they have been established already. The number of, the LiDAR study was presented, I think it was December 20th, before City Council, and so I would ask that the City Council take administrative notice of it.
Yeah, the, the issue, let me pull that up here. All right, the council may take official notice, this is under 5007-037HI. The City Council may take official notice of all adjudicative facts and law which were judicially noticed pursuant to an evidentiary code, ORS 40.060 to 40.090, including any ordinance, conference of plan, resolution, order, written policy, or another enactment of the city of Lake Oswego. Matters officially noticed need not be contained within the record, may be considered by the hearing body in determination of matter. So on the issue of the urban forestry report, like, that was received, I could, you cited to that, can you refresh my, I don't believe there was an ordinance, there's all that, resolution, order, written policy, another enactment. Okay, it was received, but I don't think it was a-
As, I believe that if enactment is broadly construed, the city decided to not take action on the State of the Urban Forest Report because it lacked staffing. It required .5 staffing or more, and I think that qualifies as, I think enactment, that would fall under a decision made by the city regarding the report, which I believe is what enactment means.
Well, that's not even accurate, what you just said, but-
I guess I would just, to the staff's position, I would conclude, it's an adjudicative fact, and so the question is whether or not the council in making, in receiving a report made any, you know, determination of its own, you know, to those facts, or to the provisions. So I don't think it qualifies, and I don't think there, because it's not one of those ordinances, conference of plan, resolution, order, written policy, or other enactment.
Because we just received the plan, received the plan.
Yes, yes.
Okay, okay, what about the songbirds?
I think the other, the songbirds?
Songbirds.
It's near, it's near the end. We have the sentences, we have far fewer songbirds referring to a major 2019 Cornell University study showing 30% fewer birds since 1970.
So that's at the end of your second, so we moved past the first one.
Yes.
Okay, the end, the page two at the bottom of it is, is what was highlighted there about the songbirds. You didn't find that in the record, okay? Can you point to us in the record where that material is, where the study, it was submitted into the record?
I did not submit that before the DRC. This is a, I did not refer to the study from Scientific American, 60 Years After Silent Spring Warned Us Birds Are Still in Trouble. That article was not referred to before the DRC.
Okay, was not referred to-
It was not.
All right, so-
I didn't mention that.
Okay, thank you. Well, with that, and thank you, Ms. Wasco, we will move to strike the highlighted portions of Exhibit G 230.
With that, although, I think the first highlight on Page One was okay, but both highlights on Page Two, continuing to three, are the problematic.
Correct, correct. Not the first highlight, the second highlights, yes. Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that passes six zero.
All right, the next one, let me make sure, got this, yes, that's it. The next one is G 231 by Suzanne Meckel. Ms. Meckel, are you present? Okay. And I think that the issue there was on the last three, that your submission there has three photographs at the end, and I believe staff found those were, those photographs were not submitted in the DRC record. Did you wish to contest that? And if so, can you point to the record where they are?
It's, so the photos are new, but she had included a photo of the same house in the DRC hearing.
Okay, then staff's position is, the record, the record is the record. Different perspectives give different perspectives. So, new photographs are not, that were not before the commission would not be-
I did, however, print the one that I did submit to the DRC and brought it with me today.
Well, okay, that's a separate issue. Let's get through that first, and then you can, you can try to put that in. But as I said, written materials needed to be submitted by, by noon today. But if it is in the record, and that's an enlargement of it, I guess you can stand up and hold it.
Yeah, it was in the record, but it was sent separately to the DRC from my-
But I think you might want to check that before she holds it up. But anyway-
It is the photo I recognize.
Okay, two to three, two to three photographs, then, the motion would be to strike those from staff.
Okay, we'll move to strike, we'll move to strike the last three photographs in Exhibit G 231.
Second.
And then the question I have is, can I-
I'm sorry, ma'am, can we finish our procedural thing, ma'am?
Let them both-
Can we finish our procedure? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that passes six zero.
Okay, so we'll deal with whatever you want to do when you get back up and testify.
Okay.
Okay, great.
Very good, thank you.
The last one, Mr. Mayor, is G 232, submitted by Mr. Sch, Mr. Ms., I'm not the title yet, signature, Diana Schmidt. Ms. Schmidt, are you present? You are.
Same topic.
There is on the, come forward if you wish to advise the council, on Page One, we've highlighted, again, a reference to the urban forestry report that was presented to the council in January. That's the, that's, that's what the, what the testimony is right there. And again, we think that's not, that was not in the DRC record, nor is it something that they can take adjudicative notice of.
Would I have received an email telling me that that wasn't going to be considered here? Because I haven't received anything, or I'm just learning of that now?
Well, I-
I sent you an email.
I didn't receive it. I just checked again. I don't have any emails.
I sent emails to all of their-
Okay, so, so the language referring to the urban-
It's at the end of the third paragraph?
Mm-hmm.
Where it starts, the State of the Urban Forestry Report presented to council in January, et cetera, et cetera.
Mm, so that language-
Just that sentence, and then the last sentence, urban development is named as a threat, that remains. Just, so it's just that one sentence. It's a long sentence, but-
Okay.
Yeah, okay, okay, we'll move to strike the highlighted portion of Exhibit G 232.
Second.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion passes six zero.
Okay, thank you, and we proceed with your staff.
Thank you, everyone, for going through that.
Okay. So this Type II tree removal application, 499-22-1001206-tree, is for 817D Avenue. This is located in the R6 zone, which is a medium density zone. The property is currently developed with a single-family residence that was built in 1947, and is approximately 1,250 square feet. The applicant is requesting removal of a 46-inch Douglas fir tree to accommodate a garage addition and expansion of the existing driveway. The photo on the left shows the existing single-car garage and the Doug fir to the left that's being requested for removal. The plans on the right show the existing footprint of the home in green, and then the proposed additions in the orange hatch marks. The addition on the left is the garage addition, which is approximately 340 square feet proposed. And then on the east side is an 11, approximately 1,100 addition for living space. The setbacks for R6 zone are seven and a half feet for the side yard, so in this, for this property, it's to the north and to the south, and 15 feet for the rear, which is on the west side near the alley, and 20 feet from the front, which is on the east side along Eighth Street. The area inside of these setbacks is referred to as the available building envelope, which is highlighted by the dark blue rectangle there. As you can see, the tree proposed for removal is located within the footprint of the garage addition. You may also notice that a portion of the home is non-conforming on the north side with a five-foot setback for just a small portion of that structure. New construction has to meet all current zoning standards. So even though there's a small portion that is non-conforming on this home, all new construction cannot increase the non-conformity. So it must fit within that available building envelope. The proposed plans have been through review and have been verified to meet all current code standards for the R6 zone. code standards for the R6 zone. So the type 2 application for tree removal, all type 2 applications must meet the criterion for approval. The DRC, the Development Review Commission, found that this tree removal application met all the criterion for this removal process. Criterion 1 is the reason for removal. This tree is being removed for development. It's within the proposed garage footprint, so that criterion's met. Criterion 2 addresses impacts to erosion control, flow of surface water, and protection of adjacent trees. And based on the evidence provided in the application and the city's contract arborist assessment on site, the requested tree removal will not result in significant negative impacts on erosion control, flow of surface waters, or protection of adjacent trees or existing windbreaks, so this criterion is met. Criteria 3 is impacts to neighborhood character and aesthetics, and this standard is met when the removal of the trees does not involve a significant tree, alterations to the distinctive features or continuity of the neighborhood skyline, a tree that serves as a visual screen, a street tree, or removal of 50% or more of a stand. When this standard is not met, the applicant must show that alternatives to tree removal have been considered and no reasonable alternative exists to allow the property to be used as permitted in the zone. This is the criteria I'll be focusing on. The DRC agreed with staff that the removal would have a significant negative impact on the neighborhood, specifically loss of continuity of the neighborhood skyline and removal of a distinctive feature along D Avenue. The DRC also found that an exception to that criterion applied because there were no reasonable alternatives that allowed the property to be used as permitted in the zone. When considering alternative designs, the applicant is required to look at shifting the building footprint or reconfiguring the footprint if doing so will maintain the functionality and constructibility of the dwelling. The alternatives must also still conform to current zoning standards. The applicant provided this alternative analysis, which shows the critical root zone for the tree indicated in a green dashed line, and that's around that circle, and a two-car garage with alley access, shown in pink. It's kind of hard to tell, but it's the, up above the tree there. This alternative design submitted along with arborist notes proposed a two-car garage shifted to the northwest corner with reduced width and set at a five-foot side yard setback, which actually doesn't meet the required setbacks of seven and a half feet. The tree is no longer within the footprint of this proposed structure, but the root structure will still be significantly impacted by the excavation required for the garage, the garage foundation and driveway. The excavation will be required to be one and a half to two feet deep and only 18 inches from the trunk of the tree. An arborist report that was provided in Exhibit F-004 and F-005, submitted for the DRC hearing, states that this would result in approximately 50% of the fine and structural roots being damaged or removed, and this is too much damage to the root system to retain Some comments suggested that an alternate location for an attached single-car garage could be as a tandem parking, one car behind another. So this image shows where a single-car attached, single-car garage would sit in this scenario, using a 12-by-20 single-car garage footprint that was suggested as a, as a standard size. This alternative is not feasible because it not only violates the garage location and appearance standards for the R6 zone, which requires the garage to be setback from the primary structure from the street, it also doesn't meet the side yard setback. That blue outline is still the available building envelope. Another suggestion was for a detached single-car garage to be put on the existing concrete This again doesn't meet setbacks, because you can see it doesn't meet the rear yard setback, and the tree is actually still located within the footprint. Another suggestion from public comment used the applicant's analysis drawing to show a single-car garage with alley access as opposed to the two-car garage analysis they did, and this is shown with the light green box there, 20 by 12. This alternative again does not meet rear or side yard setbacks, plus does not, did not include any analysis of functionality or indication that construction methods would still allow for tree retention. But using this example and taking it a little further, if you, if you shift that single-car garage to the east to meet the rear yard setback, it would displace the current parking, and they would have to shift that south, which would again violate the garage location and appearance standards because they would have to construct an addition to the existing garage out in the existing driveway. So this is kind of an example of what I mean by that. So the red outline box would, is there a suggestion of where a single-car detached, or a single-car attached garage could be? If it shifts to the east to meet the rear yard setback, it now displaces the current parking, which is the purple square, and then that parking is shifted south, and suddenly they're faced with another issue. After being presented with these alternatives, the DRC found that the applicant met the exceptions criterion, showing that no reasonable alternative to removal exists that would still allow the property to be used as permitted in the zone. Both the DRC and council have previously found that it is not a reasonable alternative to require the applicant to obtain a variance to what is permitted in the zone, or reduce the size of the structure to below what is permitted by the zone. And the tree code is not a development code. An applicant is permitted to any structural option permitted by the development code, then the question becomes whether there's a reasonable alternative to that permitted use. The appellant contends in their appeal that reasonable alternatives to removal do exist and that the DRC erred in finding that an exception to criterion 3 applied. Staff recommendation for council is that council affirms the commission's approval of tree removal application 499-22-001206-3 with the following conditions of approval, which is that two trees would be required to be planted. It's a significant tree, so that requires a two-to-one mitigation, and that prior to final inspection of the structure, those trees be inspected by city staff. Thank you for your time. That concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I'm happy to try and answer them.
Okay, does anyone have any questions, Ms. Cecil?
Counselor Afghan does.
Okay, Counselor, Counselor Afghan, please go ahead.
Thank you so much. I want to verify my understanding. What I think I have read and I just heard is that even if we approved a setback adjustment, there is still no real option to add that garage on that site as an alternative location. Is that correct?
Well, I'm going to just jump in first. I mean, the if part bothers me. If we approve setback exception. The council is hearing an appeal of a tree removal application. It is not sitting as a land use body. The code says that the applicant is permitted to do development as permitted in the, in the zone, and there's, and both the council and the commission have consistently interpreted that provision to say that, that doesn't mean that the council can either grant in this case variances or condition the, the application for the applicant to go seek variances, because that's a discretionary path to them. So I have a problem with that if, okay, part.
I understand your comment. I also want to be on the record that we as the city councilors also need to start looking at alternative way of saving our trees, and I do realize we don't have a path right now, but that was the intent of my question. I do realize that the property owner has done their due diligence and looked at the alternatives, and there isn't any, but I also wanted to understand if we as the city councilors extended our needs to save our trees, are there possibilities?
So let me just frame that, if I understand correctly. If the code was different, and that's something that you have to consider in a legislative manner in a different forum, is that something that could, you know, that could be considered?
All right. Thank you for explaining it that way.
It's kind of out, the staff will be happy to respond, but obviously from a lawyer's position, that's outside the scope of this, of this hearing, is to, the code is the code, and you judge the application based upon the current code. Do you want to talk about what the code should be? You know, that's fine, just as long as you're clear on that.
I'm actually done with my question, and I'm okay to move forward. This is, I think, a topic that we need to talk in the future. As it goes for this very specific application, I don't have any more questions. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Afghan. All right, anyone else have any, you have a question? Counselor Verdic.
There we go. It appears, though, even, let's say, some of those alternative plans, moving that, you know, the garage, and it's still within that, the root, so there's still, I think, concern of the integrity of the tree after that construction. Is that correct?
Yes.
By that, the green dashed line?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate it. Okay, we will move now to the presentation from the appellant. And Jill Cabral Shin, I believe, yes, hello, good afternoon.
Hi. A little different shape than I was last time I was here.
Oh, yes. Good afternoon.
They're awesome, thank you.
Okay, welcome.
Thanks, and I'm representing the First Edition Neighbors and Forest Hills Neighborhood Association. My name is Jill Shin, and I first wanted to state that this, that this process is the mechanism that, the very narrow lane that we have to make our voices heard as community members when it comes to neighborhood tree preservation. My husband is a small business owner. I work for a nonprofit, supporting people with disabilities and advocating for affordable housing. I have a very precocious four-year-old daughter and what I think is a soul-tinklingly adorable newborn son, ravered skier, hikers, campers, and all things Pacific Northwest. It's important to us to raise our family in a town that feels like a community nestled in the forest, close to all the activities we love to do as a family. Both of the times I've sat in front of the council, I was actually told I was divisive. And last time, I was told I was wasting people's time. I used to run restaurants. I now work for a nonprofit. I'm a mom. I'm certainly solutions-oriented. I did not design this process. Believe me, this certainly isn't fun for me either, and I can think of a much better way to spend my time. Honestly, a nap would be first on my list, but as I continue, I hope that you will listen with the lens that I'm a mother trying to preserve the neighborhood she loves for her children, using the only mechanism that is set in place for her. You do not have to agree with me, although I hope you will, but I hope you will listen while I simply follow the rules laid out, for my only hope of saving this tree that I walk by with my family, family almost every day, is proving that the application, applicant isn't following a code which we all agree needs to be fixed. I am most certainly not trying to be divisive, and I always provide potential solutions that I see in all my comments and testimony. I look to you as our elected officials to help bridge the divide here tonight. There has to be a way that together we can find a solution that allows this homeowner to have their needs met and preserve the significant tree. What I'll present, the significance of the tree, the importance to the neighborhood, misleading statements or missing information, the current state of the property, and potential solutions to save the tree. I think we can all agree that this is clearly a significant, meaningful tree to the neighborhood. It's over 46 inches in diameter, it's over 100 feet, feet tall, and staff even agree that it was significant and required two trees to be planted, which I certainly appreciate. Words do not convey the full picture of this tree's significance. It is certainly one of the tallest in the neighborhood. It is beloved by our neighbors and sits on one of the most traveled roads and the only road east and west with a sidewalk. One neighbor states, "I walk past this magnificent Douglas fir several times a week, sometimes several times a day. It is a standalone sentinel to passersby. It is most beautiful and significant tree, a wonderful asset to our neighborhood." Another one states, "If this goes, it will be number five within a block in the same alley. I've looked out at this tree from my window for almost 70 years. It would be a great loss to me to have it removed, especially since the other trees have already been cut down. I don't understand why such a grand tree couldn't be accommodated with a different design. It's a shame it survived over 100 years of being part of our neighborhood. Once again, it would be a great loss to me to have it removed." The applicant states that there is damage to the driveway. As you can see, there isn't damage to the driveway. This concrete paver was clearly designed that way. It's cut on the side. And applicant states the tree has already outgrown the landscape area and is causing damage. I would say that this pad and that fence, that wall were built right up against the tree, so it shouldn't be the tree's fault that it's outgrowing its space when the space was, space was built to constrain it in the first place. The applicant states that this is not the only tree on the property, which is technically true but slightly misleading, it is the only large tree on the property. The remaining trees are small, some even being large shrubs or other trees, as you can see here in the picture. The applicant also states it is not more than 50% of a stand, which I would agree it is not. However, this used to be part of a stand, and that stand is being dismantled one tree at a time. I urge you to take that into account in considering the weight of cutting down a significant tree. Again, the code is made to protect our trees, especially those everyone involved agrees is significant, and to encourage creative thinking to find alternative solutions to retain our significant community assets while balancing the interests of property owners and surrounding neighbors. I've written a couple alternative solutions here. I know that Daphne mentioned that some of them were against the setbacks, but I know for a fact it's a statement that their variances are allowed all the time. This pad already currently exists, so it seems to me like a really easy alternative to just build a roof or a structure over this basketball court pad that already exists. In the back there, you can see that there's already a flat area with garden boxes and a set of stairs, so it seems like there would be a really easy way to put a concrete slab and a roof over that, and then utilize those stairs to get down to the house as a, as an alternative solution. Maybe not exactly ideal, but it would preserve that tree. And then I could actually build off the alley and remove that paver area out front, so the detriment to the roots would be done in putting up the garage, but then it wouldn't have that concrete pad on the other side, allowing for that tree to be healthy and not have paved area on both sides. We didn't really talk about a garage on the other side with an entrance on 8th. The applicant also mentioned a potential alternative entrance on D, but the city wouldn't allow it. They said this in their application, but the why was not explained. And we also heard Daphne talk about pushing out the garage, which would need a variance, but you could kind of stagger it and make that work as well. And you can see here in these pictures, there's also pavers along the property line on that side that you could utilize as a way to get to the garage. As you can see, there's plenty of room for creative solutions for a second garage. I implore you to overturn the approval of this permit and send it back to staff to talk to the applicant, architect, and city to collaborate together, maybe allow a variance and come up with a solution for this project that would retain the significant tree. There must be something we can all agree on. I'm also slightly concerned about the location of their mitigation tree, and that I'd love to know where the second one is going to be, because again, it's right near those pavers, and I feel like a little ways down the road, we're going to hear that that's affecting that patio over there as well. And then if you take note of this red, red triangle here, this is the existing garage space. And here, again, Daphne went through that, that it would involve a variance, and again, I understand you can't force a variance, but maybe the applicant would be willing to apply for a variance, and we could waive the fee in good faith and make that happen to preserve that tree, because it does seem to me that with a setback variance, you can make that space work without dramatically disrupting the tree. If you have, you can see the garage dimensions on the side, 20 inches long and 12 inches wide, or a 20 by 20 garage. There are also some garages that are 18 by 20, so that's another option that you could explore to make that work and then not need a variance. And then everyone's favorite slide, this, these numbers are correct as of the DRC meeting. So since 2016, 233 trees, plus this one, if it's approved, have been cut down since 2016 in first additional loan. It's only type 2 trees, and only eight have been saved. I implore you to overturn the approval of this permit and send it back to collaborate and determine a feasible solution to retain this magnificent tree, our important community asset over a second garage. There must be a solution to preserve this tree and meet the homeowner's needs. I believe we can work together to find it. We must before it's too late. Thank you. I believe we can work together to find it. We must before it's too late. Thank you.
Finished. Yes. Okay. Does anyone have any questions for Ms. Shin? Counsel Verdick. You and those you represent say you're willing to work with the homeowner to find a solution, collaborative solution. I love that.
For sure.
So are you and your, um, those you represent willing to offset the cost for the design work to get this to a place where you're both comfortable?
Uh, I don't think our neighborhood association could afford that, nor could I speak on that.
Collaborative, it's a collaborative solution, in my opinion.
It's, it's certainly a collaborative solution. I'd be open to the conversation. I don't think I can agree right now that I'll.
No, I'm just saying, you should put that on the table. I'm just, I'll throw it out there. So.
I would certainly be.
Time and money to redo these designs costs the homeowner money.
Yeah, I totally understand.
And that costs us money too. So maybe just, that's a solution you may want to consider.
In, in answer to your question, I'm open to that conversation.
Oh, it is a question. What is going on?
Yeah.
Okay.
And, and I, I would also respond to that, that it shouldn't be this easy to cut down a hundred and fifty-year-old tree. It should be a little difficult. It should be a little expensive. That's why the tree code is in place, to put those barriers in place to cut those trees down, because it shouldn't be a nonchalant thing that we just do without it being hard.
Well, I will say, I don't think this is too nonchalant.
Me either.
Okay. All right. Um, do the neighbors, I mean, there is that concern about, you know, you come up with different solutions. You know, we have had, especially in recent weather, trees, you know, falling over and, um, people are dying, right? And trees. I just think of, um, you know, my own family. I'm sure you think of your family. Um, so if, uh, if a solution required, you know, where the tree stands for now, is that a risk that, I mean, you yourself would take?
Say that again. What is?
Damaging the, the root structure.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I don't think that we should be doing that. So I think it should be, uh, like one of the solutions that I proposed was putting a, a pad over a flat space that already exists and not having to dig down. So I think that there are solutions that require you not having to do that and not to put that at risk. And then the other thing I offered was to remove that concrete pad, which if you remove that, then that system would be healthier if you're going to build on the other side, to take that concrete pad down on the other side.
Yeah.
I understand. I have lots of big trees.
So you would not, you would not yourself put yourself, your, um, family at risk?
And I have, I have big trees all around my yard. We have.
Sure, we all do.
We have a number of branches come down. Like, that's the risk I take living here, that I live amongst big trees. And I would prefer they be here to them not being here. So I also don't, wouldn't put a second, I wouldn't put that in. So it's a, I wouldn't choose that second garage over damaging that tree is also my answer to your question.
Sure, sure. Okay. All right. Does anyone else have any questions? Okay. Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you. And I will also be ceding my rebuttal to another, uh, member of the Neighborhood Association. Thank you for your time.
To be fair, I mean, you, you represent the Neighborhood Association. Another representative of the Neighborhood Association will be speaking, but it's still the same, uh, appellant.
Yeah.
Okay. I guess, I guess I'm just apologizing for not be here, being here for the rebuttal. I have to go get my daughter.
Right. You're not ceding time. We do have an evidentiary question regarding your PowerPoint.
When it was sent to me.
Do we have to go through that again?
Sorry. Oh, yeah. I apologize. My microphone was off.
No, that's okay.
So, um, I did not get a chance to review her presentation for a second time. Uh, there had, previously, when she sent it in, there was a couple of photos that needed to be taken out. She did take those out and replace them, but then also added two other photos and a graphic that were not part of the record, the original record. Um.
There's like, I didn't add those afterwards. Just, just the way you said that sentence. It said like, I added ones after you had sent it. I didn't add additional.
Well, regardless, what photos are we talking about?
There are the two photos from the Eighth Street perspective, uh, where there's, it looks like there's no trees. It's fence and the house. So those two photos. And then the twenty by twenty graphic, um, parking.
Twenty by, oh, okay.
The, the, the car graph, the garage graphic.
Do you agree those were not in the record?
I would say the car, the car graphic was part of the record beforehand. I had, had that in my presentation. And what was the other one?
The, I'm sorry, the, the twelve by twenty graphic was part of the record. The twenty by twenty was not part of the record.
Well, is it the same?
Oh, just the, the little, the little thing that says twenty by twenty?
Yeah, that's, so I'm just saying that I noticed it was not part of the record, and it was in the presentation. So.
The little diagram of the twenty twenty garage, that, that was new. I was just.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, can we just note that, or do we need to?
Well, you would need to make mo- motion to exclude that from the, from the record.
Okay, so we're talking about, eh, the twenty by twenty graphic and the, the two photos.
So that, it's there on the bottom. So the, the one on the bottom left was part of the record. The one next to it was not.
Mm-hmm. Great.
And then, yeah, the two photos from the Eighth Street pers- perspective.
And the two photos from the Eighth Street perspective. Okay, we'll move to strike that, uh, graphic we saw in these two photos here. Second, okay. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that motion passes six zero. Okay, thank you. No, that's fine. That's good. Thank you. Good catch. Okay, thank, thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, uh, we will now hear from the applicant.
Well, there may be others who wish to testify in support of the appeal.
Oh.
That would be.
Oh, yes. Is there anyone here to testify and support? Okay, no one. All right.
Thank you, sir.
To the applicant. We, um, oh, you want to testify? Someone wants to testify? In favor of the appeal.
In favor of the appeal and, and not granting the permit, if I can say that.
Okay. Oh, yes. These are all these people here to testify for this. Okay. I have you all signed up. If there's anyone else who would like to sign up, then just fill out one of the blue forms in the back.
Who, of course, testified or appeared before the DRC.
Yes, who were able to. Okay. Um, thank you for, sorry for the, okay. We will start with Mark Pullman. Come on up. Folks, you'll have, uh, five minutes, just like in public comment, we have the timer in. You folks know the drill.
Thank you.
Okay.
My name's Mark Pullman. I live in Forest Highlands on Toma Road, and I'm here to support the appeal. Um, this is, obviously, everybody's, uh, identified that this is a large and significant tree. Uh, it is, uh, easily seen from the street, is easily seen from all around the neighborhood. So the question is, uh, are there any reasonable alternatives? And I think some reasonable alternatives have been presented, uh, here. And therefore, I feel that the, uh, appeal should be granted, and this information go back, uh, to the DRC and the city staff to redesign the garage. There are reasonable alternatives. Uh, one is, don't build the garage. Uh, it's, uh, it's a single-car garage. Of course, uh, there is some buildable space there, but, uh, we don't really, frankly, do they really need to cut down this large tree, uh, to add a second garage to the property? The relevant code, uh, Code Fifty-Five does need to be reexamined. Uh, the city's interpretation of the code which prohibits the city from mandating redesign, uh, seems to be, uh, in error, in my opinion. Um, it, the idea of reasonableness seems to be, in, in my opinion, given back to the developer or to the builder, rather than the city deciding what is reasonable and what is not. Um, the cumulative effect of, uh, tree loss in Lake Oswego, as, as you all, uh, noted, uh, back last month when you saw the LIDAR, um, uh, it does need to be taken into account. Um, a lot of the trees are being removed.
I'm going to say, uh, reference to the LIDAR report, or to the Urban Forest Report.
Oh.
Not appropriate.
Not appropriate. Okay.
Okay, that'd be new evidence.
Very good. Um, when looking at the tree, the type-two tree applications, we'll note that, uh, in, um, in 2021, twenty-seven trees were applied to be removed from just, uh, from, uh, the first edition area. And of those, eighteen were approved, uh, and nine were withdrawn, but none were denied. I don't understand why we aren't denying more tree applications. Um, uh, in 2022, before, uh, before the DRC, I did indicate that about, uh, twenty-seven trees had been applied, uh, to, for removal. And about, most, all, all of them were approved and none were denied. Um, there are hundreds of trees being removed that decrease the aesthetics of the city and our neighborhood. The trees being removed for, are being removed for multiple tree construct, uh, uh, home constructions, excuse me, uh, throughout the city, and significantly denuding our forest canopy, and we're replacing it with dogwood trees. Um, to retain the name of cities, Tree City, we must control the removal and death of our trees. Uh, we must consider all other reasonable alternatives, and so I do ask the council to, uh, accept this appeal and send it back to city. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone have any questions, Mr. Pullman? Okay, thank you, Mr. Pullman. Appreciate it. All right, next we have Diana Schmidt. Diana Schmidt.
Good afternoon again.
Good afternoon. The purpose of the tree code, and Diana Schmidt, I live a block and a half away from Eight Seventeen D. The whole purpose of the tree code is to preserve the wooded character of the city of Lake Oswego. Our mature t- tree canopy has been established to be one of our most precious assets, and one of the greatest charms of the First Edition neighborhood is the presence of very large and mature trees, including many which have been recognized with heritage status. The very existence of these large trees and the desirability of the First Edition neighborhood points to the fact that as a community, we recognize and highly value their importance and the contribution they make to all of our daily lives. It's what attracted most of us to live here. We consider the individual trees on our streets and avenues to be vital cherished members of the community, no less so than our human neighbors. It's crucial we remind ourselves when considering whether to cut down these trees, that we will all come and go, but given this chance, these trees will long outlive us, taking nothing, giving everything in return to the generations that follow. We all know the importance of large trees, and that while we have an abundance of small trees, only some of them will eventually replace larger trees. Urban development is named as a threat to our tree canopy. This tree is highly visible, a prominent feature in its surroundings, an asset not only to the property owners, but to the neighborhood at large. D Avenue is an important walking and driving corridor, as evidenced by the extensive investment made by the city to install sidewalks, landscaping, lighting. As confirmed by staff findings, this tree meets the criteria of a significant tree. Cutting it down would alter, uh, dis- uh, alter the skyline and have an indisputably negative and glaring impact on the character and aesthetics of the neighborhood. With trees, size really does matter. We must understand and acknowledge that large old trees are not simply enlarged versions of young trees. A healthy community of trees requires we preserve and maintain trees at all stages, including a tree just like this one, with substantial structural significance that's managed to thrive a hundred and fifty-plus years in its current location. We must also stop pretending that it's truly possible to mitigate the loss of a tree like this. Planting one or two young trees on the property could not begin to replace what would be lost. If the applicant is instructed to redesign the project in a way that preserves the tree, the current plans can be modified to do so. There's ample room on the property to work around the tree and still add living and garage space and build within code and setback requirements. It's the obligation and duty of the city council, as I see it, to require the redesign. There are reasonable alternatives available. With respect, I urge the applicants to consider other options. Although something may be permitted, it is not always the right choice. We're at a critical juncture. We must step back and consider the whole and acknowledge the far-reaching impact that such actions have on us all. Looking only at type-two applications and only in first edition, as has been stated, two hundred and thirty-four trees have been removed. Only eight have been saved. I'd like you to consider that each of the many neighbors and community members who have spoken up in opposition to this permit are intimately familiar with the tree, its location, and its importance. We live in this neighborhood with this tree. As Mr. Davis submitted in his comments, he has had the great pleasure of looking at this tree for the last seventy years. Reviewing staff's findings and previous submissions by the applicant, I would like to suggest again that the, there is a reasonable alternative that should be considered. For instance, slightly reducing the size of the garage footprint and keeping their original orientation of a two-car garage of a standard size, could be eighteen by twenty, oriented toward the alley with a fifteen-foot setback, seven and a half from the side, using permeable surface on the driveway, bridging the tree, uh, roots if necessary at the corner of the structure, would maintain the, uh, critical root zone, would prevent having to remove the tree, and would give the homeowner the two-car garage that they like and are entitled to, all within code and, uh, setbacks. So I ask you to please ask the applicants to redesign. Did I make it?
Thank you, Ms. Schmidt. Does anyone have any questions for, okay, thank you very much. Suzanne Meckel. Come on down.
Good afternoon.
Thank you. I'm gonna get ready here with my glasses. Um, I'm Suzanne Meckel. I live on Fifth Street in First Edition, just a couple blocks away from the significant tree. And, um, I've written some testimony here in regard to this and, um, some alternatives. So, um, I'm submitting testimony in support of, uh, appeal regarding the DRC decision to approve the removal of this very significant Douglas fir, um, for the addition of an existing garage. I ask the council to consider the following. This tree is a very significant tree, as it's very large, forty-six inches DPH, invisible from many blocks away. Its loss would be a major negative impact on the aesthetics and livability of the neighborhood. The tree is the only tree on the property, as the other trees on the lot are light locks, which is actually considered a shrub. First Edition is losing many trees to development, and it has had, uh, an effect on the aesthetics and character of the neighborhood. The tree canopy of First Edition is unique in its, its defining feature. Um, also, this tree is located on a new, um, newly put-in sidewalk that was done a few years ago that goes to the grade school. And a lot of children walk along that and see the tree. And I, I ask you, what would they think when they see this magnificent tree removed that they walk by to the grade school every day? The applicant submitted a plan to add an addition to the garage with entry from D Avenue, and it was determined that the new garage addition would not be allowed to enter from D Avenue. The applicant then submitted a plan with the garage entry from the alley. The plan does not identify the, or use the existing garage for the addition. The submitted plan is a double garage added to the existing building. The garage is not identified. So when this plan was, um, submitted for the double garage, they made it appear as the garage was part of the house when it's actually the garage. It says existing building. But actually, um, if they did a double garage and used the existing garage with the alley entrance and just added a few feet to it, they would be able to, um, save the tree. Um, I've submitted two plans, and they were not considered, as the applicant did not identify the existing garage for the addition, which would make the garage footprint smaller. The plan submitted by the applicant had inaccurate information. If the existing garage was included in the addition, the footprint of the garage would be smaller and certainly make it possible to retain the significant and irreplaceable Douglas fir. I am submitting those same alternatives using the existing garage. The alternatives, uh, I'm not sure if you got those. I attached them to this, um, testimony. Um, I'm also submitting, uh, photos of the property's retaining trees using existing, uh, or using alternative building methods. And I'm, uh, re-submitting a presentation of a recently built home and garage located at three ninety Ninth Street, where a tree of similar sizes retained using these alternative methods, including a bridge foundation. They also placed one garage closer to the alley. I ask that the council members consider supporting the appeal, as the applicant is not using the existing garage as part of the addition, as had stated on their application, which was, quote, "to construct an addition to the existing garage." The DRC did not have all of the information to make a good decision, and I, uh, thank you for your consideration. Um, this is a picture of, uh, application that was appealed to city council. Uh, this builder said they couldn't save this tree, but they actually ended up doing a bridge foundation. And you can see this tree, how close it is to the garage. a bridge foundation, and you can see this tree, how close it is to the garage. And then also, I submitted to the DRC several, um, alternatives to a paved driveway that have been used by other municipalities to save, you know, to not disturb roots on trees, because they don't require any excavation. Um, one of them is this terram, and then the other one are these turr stone pavers that are permeable. And, uh, one of them, this one I don't believe needs any excavation, and this one has very little excavation that needs to be done. And, uh, I think Jill showed, and I submitted to, the original plan that I submitted showed not using the existing garage, because they labeled it existing, uh, building when it's, and didn't use the garage. So again, if you use the garage, a double garage will fit with the alley entrance.
Thank you.
Uh-huh.
Thank you. We appreciate, do we have, do we need copies of these, or, okay, no, we have them. Wonderful. Thank you very much.
Yeah, may I also say that the DRC was very interested in this, but they were kind of led to believe that they couldn't really talk about that.
Okay. Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
One second here. Uh, does anyone have any questions? Sorry. Okay, no, thank you. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, next, uh, is Betsy Wasco.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, um, mayor, city councilors. My name is Betsy Wasco. I live at 320 Durham Street. This council needs to decide today the fate of a 46-inch diameter Doug fir who has resided at 817D Avenue since about the time US Grant was president. The applicant wants to kill the tree to build a garage, and the city has allowed it. Neighbors, including the Home Neighborhood Association of First Edition Forest Heights, oppose it. In making your decision, I submit the applicable laws are the state comp plan, Goal One, which is citizen input, and Goal Five, natural resources; the local comp plan, which is healthy ecosystems; Lake Oswego Code Chapter 55, which is the tree code; Lake Oswego Code Chapter 50, which is the building code; and ORS, Oregon Revised Statutes 197.175-2B, which provides in relevant part, quote, "Each city and county in this state shall enact land use regulations to implement their comp plans." In the tree code is a land use regulation. Our local comp plan, Healthy Ecosystems, was passed in 2016 as ordinance 2687, and it positively sings the praises of mature trees, noting they sequester carbon, improve air, soil, and water quality, prevent surface runoff and erosion, provide habitat for our non-human brethren, vitalize the economy, provide privacy and noise buffers, promote health, including mental and emotional health, decrease crime, regulate temperatures, and increase property value. With respect to mature trees, is the letter and spirit of healthy ecosystems and Goal One, citizen involvement, being implemented? No. Thousands of mature trees have been removed in the past several years over objections by individuals and neighborhood associations. The city may not ignore ORS 197.175-2B, which requires cities to enact land use regulations to implement their comp plan provisions. So if the comp plan is not being implemented through the code, whether the tree code or the building code, the city is doing it wrong. Moving forward, hopefully beginning today with this application, let's please do things differently and start taking the comp plan seriously by aspiring and striving to realize its vision of environmental and social justice. Turning to our tree code, for this app to be allowed under, um, LOC 55.02.080 sub 3, the owner bears the burden of proof to show that no reasonable alternatives exist to allow the property to be used as permitted in the zone. The owner has not met his burden, as reasonable design alternatives do exist, as we have heard, uh, from, uh, testimony here tonight and also from other written comments. Applying the law here, the comp plan and the tree code leads to but one conclusion: the app should be denied and the tree spared. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wasco. Let me just make sure no one has any questions for you. Okay, thank you very much. Stacy Yost. Good afternoon.
Hello all. Uh, my name is Stacy Yost, and I do must say that I am familiar with many of you on the council. I'm here tonight basically to request the, um, owner of the property to consider alternative options. I am in support of the appeal. As you've heard, there are other options, uh, to development on this property. I do feel that a double-car garage, if that is so desired by the property owner, could be built off of Eighth Avenue, which is a bare grass piece of property, which I did highlight in my letter to the DRC, um, and that could accommodate the desires by the property owner at the, uh, through that means. And I, another men, mention that I had in my letter was that, uh, we are in a warming climate situation where, as you've noted, we've had many large trees removed from our neighborhood. I think it is only prudent of the city council to consider every single tree that is removed from our, uh, our neighborhood. It's, the, the skyline has changed. It is no longer the neighborhood that I moved into 20-plus years ago, and I think our, um, our plants are being affected by the warming climate, so I do consider that every single large tree that's in our neighborhood needs to be preserved. So with that in mind, I really hope that the city council will support the appeal of this development. Thank you, and I concede any of my remaining hour, our time to somebody else.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Yost.
Yeah.
Okay, now, that's everyone I had sign up, is there, uh, to testify. Is there anyone else here that would like to testify in favor of this appeal? Okay. All right, then we are going to move on to Jamie Houseley, uh, who has the presentation for the applicant.
Oh, can you, um, you want the full plant, the full one with the blue?
The building envelope.
Good afternoon.
Is this on, good evening now, I guess?
Oh, it is, yes.
For the record, Jamie Houseley, attorney for Daniel and Madeline Mernicki, the applicant here. First of all, I would like to thank Ms. Sisell and staff for their thorough report. And first, give some context here for why, uh, our client has sought this permit. They've essentially sought it to accommodate their young and growing family and, uh, means of expanding their house to accommodate that. As Ms. Sisell noted, uh, the DRC correctly weighed the criteria under LOC 55.02.080 and specifically sub criterion three, which is the, the reasonable alternative section. And the DRC correctly determined that there was no reasonable alternatives here that exist that would allow the development in this zone. And specifically, I want to focus on three things, uh, both because of prior decisions, as Mr. Boone had indicated, that the city has consistently held, uh, when looking at trees, um, the, the development is permitted to be within the, the building envelope. And so as Ms. Sisell had pointed out in her, uh, report, you know, our client would be entitled to essentially go to the, the four corners there within the blue, and, you know, clearly they're not, uh, exceeding that. Uh, the one exception would be, you know, that little bit of green area that was a non-conforming use that is allowed to continue. So again, prior decisions from this council have allowed other projects moving forward to, you know, maximize sort of that, that building envelope highlighted in blue. Furthermore, this council and, uh, other prior decisions has not mandated that an applicant go seek a discretionary variance, because again, by that nature, it's very discretionary, and it's not sure that, uh, it would be granted. Um, and, and again, so when an application comes forward, you're faced with, uh, the dilemma of trying to, you know, look at the reasonable alternatives within the four corners. Factually speaking here, there's no reasonable alternatives exist that, uh, would allow the development to go forward that doesn't result in this tree coming down. I would point to your attention the, the real evidence and the record from expert arborist Mr. Prager, who noted in his report that the tree zone, uh, for this specific tree covers 24% of the lot. And Mr. Prager duly noted in his expert opinion that, uh, construction of basically anything there would require the, the impact of the, the tree root zone. And specifically, I wanted to, to read something from his report, if you may. I had it, I highlighted or put there. Specifically on page three of his report, he notes that the degree, and he's referring not only to the proposed modification, but, uh, the reasonable alternatives. "The degree of the impacts is beyond the extreme recommended thresholds found in published research for adequately protecting tree health and structural stability. The impacts are well beyond the typical thresholds of tree protection in the Lament Valley." So in other words, factually speaking, um, there is no reasonable alternative that results in this, this tree being preserved. Finally, uh, I would like to note that I believe the council's received our, our letter and has heard our argument in prior cases, but from our point of view, in the alternative, should the council not agree that, uh, we've not met the reasonable exception here, we would point the council again to ORS 197-307-4, the needed housing statute, which requires the, the city to only have clear and objective criteria when dealing with, uh, issues of housing, uh, in the state of Oregon. We've heard a lot of testimony tonight from the appellate, appellants that are laden with subjectivity, such as the fact that if it came down to choosing between having an addition and protecting a tree, they would, uh, choose to protect a tree. Again, that's, that's sort of the very subjective types of things that ORS 197-307-4 is, is meant to, uh, deal with. So, in, in conclusion, I, I do want to offer, I think, uh, the new council member, Afghan, had talked about, um, the possibility of revisiting Lake Oswego's tree code, sort of in light of these appeals returning and returning. Um, and again, I would personally reiterate our desire to work with, uh, city staff, the planning commission, and council to try to find, uh, a reasonable means that also meets state law, uh, moving forward. But, of course, that's outside the ambit of this, um, appeal, but, uh, I thought would have raised that since he raised that in his early comments. With that, um, I'm just really here to answer any questions that council may have.
Does anyone have any questions? Mr. Houseley? Okay.
Thank you.
No questions? Thank you, Mr. Houseley. So we didn't have, no one that signed up, um, in support of, um, the applicant? Is there anyone here that would like to testify in support of the applicant? Okay. I see no one. So now we'll move on to the rebuttal. Yes? Okay, so this is the time for the rebuttal from the appellate. Who is going to deliver that rebuttal?
I'll be reading it.
Hello, welcome. Okay.
Reading the rebuttal for Jill.
Okay.
"The tree is clearly a significant tree, a major, uh, portion of the skyline and contributes to the neighborhood aesthetics as an important and prominent fixture along, um, most, um, one of the most traveled and only fully sidewalked road in the neighborhood. Removing this tree is, for a second garage, would be a devastating to the neighborhood. This seems like a perfect opportunity for the applicant, neighbors, and city staff and council to come together to explore all reasonable alternatives and find a solution that works for everyone. This is a large lot with many possibilities. It appears that there are three solutions that work with either no variances. There are a few more options that would be possible with a variance. I know we can't force a variance for the application, but maybe it could be encouraged and the fees could be waived. I know this makes a lot more challenging, but it shouldn't be that easy to cut down a 150-year-old tree. Preserving our significant trees is what the tree code is for, and I hope tonight, and ultimately the process going forward, can actually be about upholding the code and finding a mutual solution. The DRC again struggled with this decision, and I ask that there, you use your position to have, um, and to find a solution and preserve this clearly significant, majestic, and meaning tree that's meaningful to our neighborhood. And then also, contrary to what the applicant has stated, there is in fact at least one reasonable alternative, retuning to their original design, but slightly reducing the footprint to that of the standard two-car garage. And then also, I see if they use their existing garage, they definitely, that is an alternative, that you could have a double garage and make room for the tree, and both of those surfaces for driveways have been used in other municipalities to save, um, trees by not disturbing their roots. And I think that these no dig options should be definitely explored. And I think that's it."
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I do want to mention one thing, though. He was talking about the housing, the attorney, excuse me. And this is a garage. This is not housing. We're talking about, he was trying to, s, talk about how we need to, you know, do certain things for the new HP 2001, but a garage does not, it doesn't apply.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay. Um, uh, council, would someone like to make a motion to get the discussion going? Microphone.
Does someone have the thing? I'd like to make a motion to tenderly affirm the commission's decision to approve the tree removal application for 9922001206 tree. Really? Uh, with conditions of approval. That's it? What's that?
And direct staff.
Oh, there you go. And direct staff to present findings, conclusions, and in order of finalizing the council's tentative decision on February 7th, '23.
Is there a second? Second counsel, one, okay. All right, uh, discussion. Counsel Raff, did you want to? Oh, oh, that was for the, uh, uh, counsel, one minute.
I guess I have a, um, a question of Attorney Boone. What's the state building code with respect to building the house on your property? Sense of, uh, it's, we're looking at property owners' rights versus community, I guess, benefit. Sense of, it's, we're looking at property owners' rights versus community, I guess, benefit.
The tree code provision says that a person gets to build what's permitted under the, you know, under, in the zone. That would include development code, building code, et cetera. And so, whatever they're entitled to build, okay, without variances, would be permissible. I know there was some testimony about separation, I think, but sure.
Right. But there's, from the standpoint of Lake Oswego's building code and our tree code, are we clear and objective in the sense that you can, as long as you're conforming within the confines of code, you can build what you want?
Yes. We don't distinguish as to, and the code doesn't distinguish, you have a certain buildable right, okay? If you want to make it all garage, you could, you know? I mean, well, there has to be a primary dwelling, okay? But the size of it, it doesn't make any difference. I mean, I could build a larger house in a smaller garage or a smaller house in a larger garage if I wanted to. I've got to meet my lot coverage requirements, maximum F A R, you know, confined within the setbacks from a, from what's permitted under the code.
And so, from your perspective...
The building code, I mean, I just, the building code only talks about the manner of construction, so that's why you've kind of thrown me a little bit here.
Well, I guess it's the rights of, of an individual property owner and, I guess, the clear and objective criteria. I've heard that now for several years. And I think that's something that we need to have for our building code and tree code and everything else, that people know what are the objective criteria in a very clear manner.
I think that, and again, to Counsel Afghan, my response to Counsel Afghan, the question is what does this code require?
Correct.
Not what is the future code should be.
No, just this.
Right. But the point is, is this code, while it, I mean, has some discretionary standards in it, when you get to the alternative, I'm looking at reasonable alternatives, what reasonable alternatives do you look at? You look at those that are permitted under the code, you know? Look at what variances you might consider. They have, they don't have to apply for variances. And that, I mean, I'd just be clear, that has been the interpretation in the 20 years I've been here.
Okay. So, consistency has been maintained?
Yes. And, and my philosophy, and it, and until the council changes the code so that all applicants and the neighborhood knows what the new rules are, we should apply, I mean, that's why we apply the current code. And so, at the beginning end of it, you know, what you're trying to do as opposed to redesigning on the dais, okay?
Correct. Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you, Counsel Wimble. Counsel Raff?
Just a comment, and I've said this before in similar proceedings. To me, this is not about a tree. It's not about someone's house. We need to be, as a community, we have got to be nicer to each other. This house sold last year, and I can't imagine buying a house, moving in, and having my entire neighborhood against me, coming in to publicly testifying how the things I'm trying to do to raise my family, do whatever, is so horrible. I would be, I'm disappointed. That's not the community that I believe Lake Oswego is and can be. So, that's all I want. Everyone who's, I don't care for or against, but can we just treat each other a little bit more respectfully? That's it. Would you want this to happen to you?
Hey, thank you, Counsel Raff. Counsel Verdic.
There we go. I just want to say, this is hard from the perspective of, I hate to see such a magnificent tree come down, but from the way I'm reading the code, I think that's where, you know, they're allowed and permits, it's permissible under the code, the way it's written. And I will say, I was looking at, you know, are there any alternatives? And I feel they did actually a pretty good job showing why alternatives wouldn't work, and they showed a variety of alternatives. It wasn't just one alternative. And we do have, you know, the arborist saying, you know, we've got to be very careful with the tree, the roots and so forth, and the integrity of the tree would be impacted if we, you know, started to disrupt that. And I think that's, that's valid. And as much as, again, I hate to see this tree come down, I think they did, you know, show, again, a variety of alternatives. And in the past, I felt like some haven't, and I felt like this, they did in this case. I also think it's important to note, there's a lot of different ways to look at sustainability and the impact to the climate, and they are not taking or tearing down the existing building. They are adding on to it. And I think, you know, I think that, in my opinion, is a positive. So, they're actually, you know, maintaining a structure which in and of itself is good for the environment, so I do commend that action.
Thank you, Counsel Verdic. Counsel Wimble.
I guess I would just say, based on being in this position before on city council, we're a judicial, quasi-judicial role tonight. We're not policymakers. We're interpreting the policy that we have in Lake Oswego, and I just want to make sure that the public knows that. In, in that same vein, we need to ensure that we have a track record of making decisions that are consistent with our code and following the code. I will say that, you know, there's a, to Counsel Raff's point, people do buy property and if they come in, it's a young family, we need to do everything we can to welcome them. And yes, there are trees, hey, there are trees in first edition that I helped plant that are as, almost the size of this tree. And I'm not going to tell you how old I am, but I'm younger than the tree that's being considered. And I would say that we've done an excellent job in Lake Oswego of being a tree city and preserving trees, and we can talk about trees later. But I will say this, the, the right of a property owner has, in my opinion, certain rights that are enforced by the state of Oregon and our city code. And I think that's what helps Lake Oswego maintain value as well as opportunity for people to come into our city and buy and help develop and improve our city and add to the tax base. And so, I'm the last person that wants to necessarily take down a tree, but if this is the family decision that they want to do, we shouldn't be micromanaging their decisions unless you want to be part-owner of the lot. And the house, obviously, was available. And I will say that in previous times, we've had before this council, somebody who sold their house and valued the tree in front of them and decided that they would, when, when the person that bought the house wanted to remodel and take a tree down, the owner came back and testified that they shouldn't take the tree down. And I looked at that as being, well, why didn't you put a restriction on the tree or take a hit on your sale price? It's property. And I think it, it just shows that sometimes things happen in your direction and sometimes things may not happen in, in where you're at. But I do believe we need a consistent code, and we have consistent code before us, so that's where I'm at.
Thank you, Counsel Wimble. Counsel Corrigan?
Well, I would like to acknowledge two things. We have a code. This is a quasi-judicial decision. It has to be based on the current code. But I'd like to also acknowledge that I, I am hearing from a neighborhood that's lost hundreds of trees, and I think things change. And I also, the other thing that I heard was that they believe that the urban forest plan is germane to the discussion, so I would ask that we consider that going forward.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counsel Corrigan. Counsel Afghan, did you have something to say?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Oh, second. I mean, we're going to give you some volume here.
Climate change is real. Now, we know for a fact that global warming is impacting all of us. And a long time ago, I think, cutting a single tree or five of them or 10 of them at the same time, it was no big deal. But now, we know that with every single tree that's taken down, we're accelerating our climate change for worse. But we don't see that at every one of these reviews. I've also watched many city councilors' meetings that they talk about the same thing over and over and over with the same outcome. The root cause of our conversation, I think that was Ms. Wasco that talked about comprehensive plan and the tree code and the development code, they're disconnected. So, that's something, as the city council, we now have to address because every tree that's cut down, it impacts the whole world, whether we want to acknowledge that or not. But at the same time, development is also part of our economy. So, I think for our 2023 goals, we have to sit around the table as city councilors and decide, do we tackle this issue so we don't have to have these type of conversations with the neighborhoods again and again or not? But as far as this very application is concerned, I think the outcome is very clear. And you have, in the past, you have come out with the same conclusion. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Thank you, Counsel Afghan. Ms. Cecil, oh, you're right there. Great. I just had a question on the, on the mitigation. It was listed another Doug fir and Alaskan cedar, and does that still stand?
It wasn't set out to the applicant that that's what they had to. It was a suggestion by the city's contract arborist that a Doug fir be one of the trees as mitigation, and they had already, the applicant had already suggested an Alaskan cedar. I told them that they needed to plant two native trees and that they needed to submit a mitigation plan. If they want to plant two conifers, that's great. It was not a condition of approval from the notice of tentative decision.
Mm-hmm. I, I would suggest that we stipulate the Doug fir, as we've done in the past, especially given the stature of this tree, and they do have a good amount of space on the property, which is unique, which is why we've seen smaller statured trees replaced, to replace this Doug fir with another Doug fir in addition to the Alaskan cedar, which is also an evergreen, you know, by the way. If, do, would they have to...
First of all, to be clear about your suggestion, are you saying they could put in two Doug fir?
No, one Doug fir and a cedar. They have to do two trees.
I know, they have to do two. Does it have to be alternating, or could they do two of the same thing? I just want to clear that.
One Doug fir.
It has to be one Doug fir and then another...
They had suggested the Alaskan cedar.
Could they also put a Doug fir in in lieu of the Alaskan cedar? That's what I'm trying to...
Doug fir and/or Alaskan cedar.
Okay. And/or. All right. Thank you. Yes. Now, if you're going to propose that, I suppose you should do that first as an amendment, get a second, then we'll hear from the applicant.
I'll move to extend, move to amend the motion made to require the mitigation tree to be one Doug fir and/or an Alaskan cedar.
With a motion and a second, then, beforehand, the applicant has the right to speak as to the condition.
That condition, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So, to be clear, it'd be a Doug fir and a cedar. Okay. Or two Doug firs, whatever. And I did have another, so, because we, oh, yes, all those in favor? Say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. That passed a six zero. Thank you. With the, on the prior appeal we had, we, we set forth some street trees as well. Do the city, does the city plant street trees? Or whose responsibility is it to plant the street trees?
I'll let Jessica answer this one.
In the first edition neighborhood, they require that when you build a new home, you're required to plant two street trees for every 50 feet of frontage. In this case, it's not a new home, it's a remodel, so they are not required to plant street trees.
I see. Do we do anything proactive in terms of, could we do something pro...
I would strongly recommend that that's a policy topic, and just as the conversation about whether we like the code or not needs to really be done in the context of goal-setting, it needs to be done in the context of goal-setting. I would not suggest you condition your approval on an action by the city in this case.
Okay. That's good. Okay. Thank you. Yeah, it's a good, I just think we have these other, I, I hear the neighbors and, you know, appreciate their passion for the natural environment, and we all share that. I just feel like folks sometimes are just setting ourselves up for failure time and time again because we are stuck with a code that has many objectives. And when we focus on numbers, for instance, I see the numbers, well, this is the 238, you know, trees that have been cut down, this and that. We're just focusing on the number of trees removed for type two, we're not focusing on the whole picture. You know, there's more to the health of the, of our natural environment, to the urban forest, than just these type-two permits. There's more to do to say, well, this, and again, I appreciate the time the neighbors are putting in and whatnot, but to say that this is all we can do to help the natural area, which is what the appellant said, is just not true. I mean, there is a lot that we can all be doing together to help the health of the natural area than just opposing type-two permits that qualify. Okay? I mean, if there's legitimate points, we understand that. But if you're just coming in on the same, this, this appeal looks just like the one we had before, and it's just taking time that we could be otherwise really thinking in terms of how we do work together to improve the health of our urban forest, whether it's street trees, however we go forward, whether it's looking at mitigation standards, but we just don't want to be setting ourselves up for failure to making it seem like, well, we're not doing anything because of type-two permits, when there's just so much more to it than that. So, but sticking to the criteria for this application, I, I agree with my colleagues that the applicant has, has met the criteria. I do appreciate that they have gone through. That was something we heard before, that an analysis really had not been gone through to look at the alternatives, and here in this case, they went through and looked at various alternatives, and they just, there is, they just don't work, you know, without variances, just don't work given, given the current, given the current code, so. Okay. Those are my comments. So, we'll take a vote. Let's go ahead and call it a roll, please.
Mayor Buck?
Yes.
And Counsel Wimble?
Yes.
Verdic?
Yes.
Raff?
Yes.
Afghan?
Yes.
And Corrigan? Motion passes six zero.
Okay.
This is a tentative decision with written findings brought back to the council on February the 7th.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mr. Boone. Thank you, everyone. We'll take a brief recess here. Wonderful. Thank you, Mr. Boone. Thank you, everyone. We'll take a brief recess here. All right, everyone, we are back, uh, back in order. Thank you for being here. Okay. Uh, we are now going to move to item 9.1. This is a study session on pickleball, on pickleball operations. We're joined by Director Ivan Androhom and our park and now analyst, Kyra Hager.
Kyra.
Kyra. Kyra, sorry. Kyra, I knew that. All right, good to have you both here. Let you take it away.
Okay, um, good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for having us back again to talk about this. Um, when we met last, back in November, we shared with you the results of a four-month community process where we identified several alternative sites, um, for where pickleball could go in the city. And we also shared with you some information about possible sound mitigation measures, those sound-absorbing panels. And, um, tonight, we return to you with three items for discussion. The first is, you asked us to bring some information about, um, the possibility of covering the courts at George Rogers Park for the purpose of mitigating the noise impacts. Second, we have, um, brought you more details about the two sites that you preferred that were identified by the task force. And finally, we took a look at our inventory of existing racket court facilities in the city, um, for the purpose of fully converting those courts to pickleball or restriping them for dual pickleball and tennis play. So, we're gonna start with the covers. Um, there are two types of covers that are typically used for pickleball or tennis courts. Um, I'm gonna tell you upfront, both of them are over 100,000, um, or more, depending on what features you want. Um, they can be purchased, but they can also be leased. And there are pros and cons to each of them, the steel frame tension fabric structure that you see on the screen, um, those are pretty sturdy, but they're pretty intensive to put up, so they're more of like a, a, a long-term solution, you can't put them up and then take them down very easily. Um, the air dome or like the bubble style cover, um, is easier to take, put up and take down, which makes it a little more flexible, um, but, um, what we've learned is that anecdotally at least, they become like heat domes in the summer, and so they're really uncomfortable to play in during hot weather, which doesn't really, um, solve the problem during the summer season, um, which is why most recreation providers only use that style of cover during the cool seasons. Um, it is possible to provide air conditioning inside of them, but that adds significantly to the cost. One issue with covering the courts of George Rogers Park with a cover is that the current location of the courts is immediately adjacent to the curb on Lad Street, it's really not set back at all from the curb. Um, so, to put up a structure like this, that would require us to request a major variance, um, to the setback standards, and depending on how, how high the structure would need to be, we may also need to request a variance to the height standards. Um, the other issue is that, while there are anecdotal reports of people experiencing reductions in noise outside of the bubble or cover, um, none of the manufacturers that we reached out to had done any studies to quantify this, we weren't able to uncover any other information, there just doesn't seem to be any data about whether they actually do mitigate noise, and if they do, how much. So, um, we just, we don't, that information isn't available, unfortunately. Um, talking about our alternative sites, uh, this is, this first option is on the west side of town, um, just west of Pilkington Road at Rosewood, that's Boons Ferry in the northwest corner. The whole site, which is outlined in turquoise, is about 1.6 acres, and it's made up of two privately-owned properties. It is currently zoned industrial park, which does allow for the development of pickleball courts, um, and it's got great access to transportation and transit off of Boons Ferry. Um, and, uh, in addition to pickleball, we'd also be required to build out, um, half-street improvements along Pilkington and Rosewood Street to connect to the existing sidewalk network that's in that area. We estimated the total cost of developing this site at just over $1 million, and that number includes about $350,000 in soft costs, which are, um, design, property appraisal, geotechnical and arborist reports, civil engineering to design the stormwater and infrastructure improvements, a lot of things that need to happen upfront before we even put a shovel in the ground. Um, and that would also include a, a parking study and a traffic study and permitting, all of that stuff. We've had a few conversations now with, um, each of the property owners, because it's two different property owners, and they're both open to the idea of leasing us their properties, um, for a long-term lease, I think 10 to 15 years. Um, so that soft cost number also includes, um, on an annual basis, uh, cost in there for that, um, leasing both properties for the purpose of this. So, that means that the majority of the construction costs for this particular, particular site is actually in the infrastructure improvements, which is those, those half-street improvements, sidewalk, curb and gutter, stormwater, that kind of thing. Um, the cost of constructing just the six pickleball courts alone in a 120-foot by 120-foot area is about 250,000, just for context, and that includes fencing and surfacing and netting. That's assuming you have a perfectly flat site, which in this case, we actually do, but there's still a lot of site work that needs to be done in the background. Our second site that we've talking about tonight is Hazalia Field. I'm sure many of you are already familiar with this property, um, it's a city park already. The idea for this site would be to relocate the large, uh, active dog park somewhere else in the city, and then develop pickleball, and also probably some additional parking, um, in the dark, in the dog park area, and the pickleball would go approximately where that red dashed square is located. Um, Hazalia is zoned park and natural area, and it would require a conditional use permit for us to develop pickleball courts there. That process would likely include neighborhood outreach, public hearings, and a traffic and parking study to determine, um, how many additional parking spaces, if any, would be required. The cost estimate for this site is just under a million, um, estimated around 880,000, and that also includes some of those soft costs, but for this particular property, since we already own it, there's no property lease or acquisition, there's no property appraisal, um, and also because the site is already developed, there's no half-street improvements. So, it's, it's a bit less for that. Um, however, it does, the construction costs are a little higher because there is some grading work that would need to be done in this area, there's actually a, a slight slope in the area where the pickleball courts could be located. Um, that total cost does not, however, include the cost for relocating the active dog park area somewhere else in the city, so we don't know how much that would be because we don't know where it would go. So, that would likely be an additional cost. And finally, you asked us to look, um, at our existing inventory of racket court facilities in, on city-owned properties. Um, and the, the one that came up was, um, this Westlake Park, which as you can see is currently developed with two tennis courts. Um, I should add that we, we do operate a single tennis court off of South Shore by the fire station, but that's really not an ideal location for pickleball, it's only about 25 feet from the backyard of the nearest house, and, um, just not a great spot. Um, so, Westlake Park was actually identified as a possible site for pickleball during our task force process. However, the task force voted not to bring it forward as one of their preferred alternatives because, um, the Westlake courts, the tennis courts there are the only lit outdoor courts in our system, and they're very well-used by the community. Um, and as you can see on the map, the southeast corner of the courts is actually a bit less than 150 feet from the nearest residence, um, and 150 feet was, of course, the, the search criteria that our group agreed upon at the outset of the task force process. So, based on what we now know about pickleball noise, it's likely that mitigation would still be required at this location if you were to convert these courts into six pickleball courts. Um, we may be able to reuse the sound mitigation material, the acoustic fence material from George Rogers Park at this location, we would need to put in some additional fencing, um, but it is possible that that could be reused. Um, the options really include either fully resurfacing and converting these two tennis courts into six pickleball courts, similar to what was done at George Rogers Park, or restriping these two tennis courts to accom- to accommodate both pickleball and tennis play. So, you'd have four courts, but they'd be in the, the plot of two, of two courts, and you couldn't play all four games at the same time. Um, restriping two tennis courts would probably not have any land use impacts because we wouldn't be increasing the total number of courts available for simultaneous play or the total number of users that could be there at one time. It's also the most cost-effective option at around 25,000, we think, based on our, our estimate for George Rogers Park when we restripped that one. Um, but converting two tennis courts into six pickleball courts may result in us needing to do a modification to the conditional use permit at Westlake Park, which could involve land use review, neighborhood outreach, public hearing, uh, parking study and traffic study, um, all of that would likely need to be completed before development. Um, this could result in a condition that additional parking spaces are required for the site, and that would be the, that would be the primary challenge. Um, we estimated the cost of fully converting the courts to pickleball at around 60,000. That does not include the addition of parking, um, that's just to fully resurface the courts, restripe them, new nets, additional fencing, installation of sound mitigation, um, and that is assuming that we could reuse the sound mitigation from George Rogers Park. And, um, finally, I wanted to take a minute to talk about the conversation that our parks board had at their December meeting. The board received an update on the status of, um, various capital improvement projects on our. on our funded and unfunded lists. That includes both Resiek and the Lorac and all the other projects that are underway and were recently completed. The board heard from representatives from various community interests, including pickleball, but also local skaters, trail accessibility advocates, Lusher Farm supporters and pickleball players. And ultimately, they passed these two motions. The first was to continue the use of George Rogers Park until such time that new courts and equal opportunity can be made in Lake Oswego, install a sign and kiosk at the entrance that says noise-sensitive neighborhood and only use of green paddles will be accepted. And the second motion was to rank new pickleball courts low on the list of priorities in light of all the other unfunded capital improvement projects on the list. Unless Ivan has anything to add. Turn it over to questions.
Could you talk to us a little bit about the funding available? So when we met the last time, and you know, we were, and you know, also we have two new members of the council since the last meeting. We were looking at alternatives, which you mentioned, the top two, Hazalia Field and, and on Pilkington. Since that time, we have learned that we're in a bit of a funding. We had a crunch. We had the estimates come in for both the Lorac and Resiek that were more than we had anticipated. And so now, while we fund the Lorac, we're putting together a separate funding plan for Resiek. And it's clear, we just don't have the funds right now to build new pickleball, to develop new pickleball courts like the ones on Pilkington or Hazalia. Correct? I mean, and, and we see that the Parks Board would prioritize that low on the list of, because there's obviously more than just Resiek and pickleball as well on, on the CIP. But the Parks Board seems to be putting that lower on the list. So we're kind of, which is why we're looking at other sites because we have obviously a great need in the community for pickleball. We don't have the funds to build brand-new courts at this time, maybe in the future, but not at, not at this moment. Is, is that kind of a good summary of where we're at?
Yes. Sorry, I didn't think my microphone was hurting.
And if, if we were, based on everything we've learned so far, I mean, if we were, I saw in the staff report and talked about the process we would go through if we were, for instance, you talked about Westlake. And if we're looking at Westlake, we'd go through an engagement process to really look at the traffic, look at the parking, look at the impacts. I know in 2015, when the courts were converted at George Rogers, we didn't go through that. Would it be the same thing today or what would be different?
We believe that we would be required to do a conditional use permit modification.
Okay. So go through more of a process to look at everything.
Yes, and, and we've confirmed that with Planning Department. And primary difference is we know a lot more about pickleball today than we did in 2015. So we would want to go through that process. And so there, there's some time there. And then as Cara mentioned in her presentation, when we look at that too, the greatest unknown at Westlake right now, in my mind, from a development standpoint, is if in fact, additional parking is triggered through that process, the availability of land at the park to put parking onsite is very limited, almost to the point where it almost doesn't exist unless we're going to put parking right up against the back fences of people that about the park.
Okay. Okay. All right, Councilor Raff, you have a question.
Thank you. Two questions. Have we engaged the neighbors in Westlake yet on this, on the potential to move there?
No, we have not.
Okay. Second one, a gentleman who did, who came for a public comment, brought props, the silent, more the quieter paddle, the quieter balls. I know that like eight or nine months ago, that, that was a discussion that we had, but I believe someone said, well, it's out there, it's not really prevalent yet, the options are limited. Is it our understanding or your understanding that the options for more adequate, it's not the right word, but pickleball balls and paddles are more prevalent in the marketplace now where it's a more viable option? Based on your experience?
My experience and my understanding is that the green paddles or the paddles that are less, make no, less noise, they're more prevalent in the market right now. And there are a number, number of sources where we can see less, including lists that are provided by USA Pickleball that will talk about those different paddles. As far as the ball itself, there is some pickleball that's played with a soft, spongy ball. It's not, and there's a bunch of pickleball players behind me, it's definitely not a preferred and in some cases is not an acceptable way to play the game.
But are there normal, like the normal consistent C-ball, I don't know what, you guys know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Hey, look, he's got them right there.
The plastic balls, yes.
And we're, we would be able, whatever location we decide to keep, to put pickleball, we would be able as a city to mandate the type of equipment allowed? I can hear you.
Okay. I think we could install signage, requesting that. I think enforcing by like having someone stand there and checking paddles, you know, is certainly challenging from a staff standpoint.
Yeah, I don't mean to police it, but I mean, we can put system, like signs in place saying, you know, no blacks sold shoes on the basketball court kind of thing, right? Thank you.
Councilor Bo.
Thank you, Evan. And I have a question. My question is, the board decided before to not use George Rogers, but in December they say that it's okay to use George Rogers. What are the rationale they have now that we can use George Rogers Park? You're not a member of the board, but I just, do you?
I think at the last meeting, I'll say that the board reflected on new pickleball courts as a project in the context of the entire project list that the Parks Department has. And that may have had some impact on their, their decision and their motion.
Okay. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah. Can I just add to that? I'm the liaison to Parks and Rec and I attended all the meetings from the beginning. I think there was a feeling that the, initially when we were going through the discussion earlier this year, that they were concerned about the, the noise and the issues with the neighbor, neighbors. And that's why they had kind of a split decision on that. They asked the city to go back and do mitigation and meet with the pickleball group and the neighbors and come to a, maybe an agreement. And that's when there was the, I think, 40 to 60% reduction in time. There was all kinds of different things that were put in mitigating steps. And then after those mitigating steps were put in, the board felt that the city had done a, a good job of mitigating the best they can and the concerns of both groups. And they came to a compromise and implemented, implemented that. And then I think, most importantly, they ended up with a understanding that while it wasn't a perfect situation, it was meeting the goal of the Parks and Recreation Department to ensure that we provide recreation for our community and that there were possible options in the future that they wanted to continue to, to pursue.
Yeah.
And then they put the stipulations for the, the balls, quiet balls and, and anything we can do. And they were, they were in favor of doing the additional mitigation at those courts if they can bring the court down. And then they did want to know what, if we could do a sound study to see whether we were within the, how much of a difference that all that made.
Yeah. And, and that's what I've been saying all the time, like, because for me, it's very clear for me, we should not close George Rogers Park. That's, you know, clear that where I stand because you close it, you are going to Westlake. Councilor Raff said, have you talked to those people? It will be the same thing if we can help. I am also against the fact that we say, okay, we, the dog park, the former mayor told me that it was in some neighborhood, people were not happy, they moved it over there. But now we are saying moving it again. Where? Maybe to another neighborhood and we will, it will be a vicious circle. We should find a way to live together, players, because, and I don't, and that's my question. How can we live together, players and neighbors? Like it was the sound mitigation. How has the sound mitigation made any change since we asked that? What do you think? You think it has made a difference?
It made a measurable reduction in the, the decibel levels.
Thank you. I think the, the point we're hearing is that, and when we convene the task force, I mean, we're coming up with this, this distance of 150 feet with mitigation, right? And that's based on what we see elsewhere. In addition, and it's not to say that's what they do everywhere, all right? Sometimes it might be less than 150 and some cases it's well over 150. But we decided 150, looking at options we have here in Lake Oswego, that 150 with mitigation though, with mitigation. So here we are much closer, right? 40, 50 feet.
50.
50 feet, right? From homes. And we're just, obviously we have tried as a council, we have tried the mitigation, talked about the paddles. And we've gone through this process, really trying to create, but we didn't ask, we didn't go to Old Town initially, we did not go through a process to really analyze this. And that's not anyone's fault, just we did not know, you know, all about pickleball back in 2015. It wasn't what it, it wasn't then what it is now. And so we've been trying to create this, you know, bring these two things together, but the environment is just not, I mean, in my opinion, it's just not going to work. This is the, the, you know, this is the square peg and the round hole situation. I mean, it is just not going to work. But I look at this with fresh eyes. You know, if we're saying this, if we were here today now and we look at our, our budgetary constraints, we say, well, we can't consider brand-new courts right now because we have too many other needs and that's just out of the question. So we look at our current racket facilities and let's pretend that George Rogers is back to tennis and Westlake is playing tennis. We said, well, we have these two facilities. We have Westlake and we have George Rogers. And we know that about 150 feet, it's about a good distance with mitigation. Which part would we choose? Why on earth would we choose George Rogers? We wouldn't. We'd say, well, let's look at Westlake. So I'm back to that point, like, let's look at Westlake a much more, I mean, we have to go through a process, but at least it's a viable process. And it be a location where these two activities can coexist like we see in, in, in other communities. But you know, it's always sometimes too, it's not just always about the, the code and we hear lots of stuff about decibel levels and measurements and all of that. But we've seen these examples in the past where it's just about being, you know, good neighbors and things that we have to do in town to be good neighbors to one another. And it's not always based in code, it's not always this, it's just, we are a community, as I've said before, we are a community, first and foremost, of residents. And we put so much emphasis in everything we do. I think of all the housing work that we've done and the emphasis we put on the character of the neighborhoods and preserving the, the uniqueness of, of, of our neighborhoods. And there's so much on the resident experience here. And yet we come to pickleball and it's like, oh, well, you know, it's just some neighbors, you know, they're, you know, and it's like, we first and foremost are here, you know, to live together. So I think whether it's one homeowner, two homeowners, three homeowners or 500 homeowners, we really want to look at the experience of a resident, you know, first and foremost, and then fit everything else in that, in that context in as cohesive a way as possible. I think we should be clear too here, this doesn't mean that, as we hear lots, lots, we get lots of feedback about uses, well, we, that, that people say aren't, you know, congruent. And it's people that might live around downtown here and say, well, we have delivery trucks that deliver to the businesses in the morning, we don't like it. I even have my own business, we don't like the smell of food, you know, people that live next to a restaurant, we don't like the smell of food. It's like, well, you know, what are you going to do? So there's a lot of times when it doesn't mean we say, oh, we're shut down the businesses, you know, we, but obviously we try to work. You put scrubbers, you know, on vents and you do things, you talk to your delivery, we talk to like our delivery drivers, say, hey, you know, when you come early in the morning, can you just be quiet about it? Don't be as loud as possible. And it's just things we do, we don't have to. We could say, hey, code lets us get things whenever we want, here even here at City Hall. The neighbors complained that the trash was coming too early in the morning, city manager, we could have just said, hey, code allows it. Sorry, you're the one to live down to downtown, so suck it up, you know? But we didn't. Now the trash comes in the afternoon and the cars have to move and went through this whole thing to be good neighbors. So these are just examples of ways that we do go above and beyond in this community to be good neighbors, first and foremost, to the resident, you know, experience. And I think we have a way to do it here, so why, why not? That's why I sit over there. Councilor one.
Well, I, I agree with some of what you're saying. I, I agree with a lot of what you're saying. I also agree that there's some additional part. I think we live, work and play in Lake Oswego and they're all of value. So it's not just neighborhoods. I think we have a robust business community, we have a robust Parks and Rec Department, we have robust volunteer organizations, we do everything robustly in Lake Oswego. And that includes playing. And I, I think Mayor Hopman started off the testimony about how we've been in this position before. And I was part of this position when Lakewood High School had a conditional use permit when they built the school, that they couldn't have Friday night games at their high school. And it was, they were forced to come over to Lake Oswego and play on a field, the opposition field, the town rival, and it sucked. I mean, it really was horrible for the Lakewood community as well as Lake Oswego, especially when it was a visiting game and Lake Oswego's side had to go on the visitor's side. It was just a, not a great situation. The community, Palisades Neighborhood Association got together, the school district, all kinds of people. And to Mayor Hopman's suggestion, or his history lesson, Lakewood and everybody worked out a compromise and they all lived together. And I think they worked out a solution for both sides that neither of them were completely happy. And sort of, that's sometimes good government and good policy where not everyone is happy. But, but the needs for the most part are met. And I would say that we have a similar situation with a pickleball group. To your point, Mayor, we did not anticipate the growth of pickleball. But it's a national sport now with big names investing in it. So it's here to come and I think it's here to stay. So I think we do need to deal with it. And what I'm particularly impressed with is that it's engaging our senior community in active engagement, both from a community standpoint, building community and getting outside and exercising. And I, I think both sides came together, the neighbors, the pickleball group and the city to work out a compromise. And there was great reduction in the time. We put in times that you could do it. We took out what I call a prime day, Sundays when families would probably be using it and said, no more. We invested in sound mitigation. We're trying to deal with the parking considerations. We installed locking gates. We invested, we were not just talking about trying to make things better, we actually invested in and problem solved. And I thought they would work out. Obviously, we still have dissension. But I would say that we have met in many ways to compromise. And I'm fine going over to Westlake, but I guess the big picture is that it would have to be kind of park hours, they could use it. We'd have to give the pickleball community a reason why they would support this, other than just moving them, if that's the case. But I'm, I'm not 100% sold on the idea that you can't put a mitigating cover at George Rogers Park and have pickleball 12 months out of the year in a very quiet way. But to count, but I'm not saying that we go down that path. But what I am saying is that we are going to have to have capacity for pickleball as well. But what I am saying is that we are going to have to have capacity for pickleball as we move forward. And so we're gonna have to find some solutions somewhere along the way. And I really respect the community, the neighborhood, and the pickleball community. Part of it is mental illness of residents versus mental wellness of pickleball players. And that's kind of a hard thing to figure out. And I don't think there's a if, and, or, or there's not a black and white decision on this. And I would, I would suggest that we keep the pickleball courts under the current condition. And then if, if we support the, going down the Westlake path, we go down the Westlake path and investigate it as a possible solution. But I'm, I do think that what we have is not perfect for anyone. But it's, and I think we've done a spectacular job of trying to bring both sides together. And it's not an easy solution. And it's something that there won't be a perfect solution.
Right.
For now.
Well, it's a good point, too, about, you know, because everyone has, you know, done a good job really trying to work together. But, you know, through that, we've had a really severely limited play. We saw in testimony provided a chart, you know, the hours that people can play versus they can't play, plus the different programming. And so at a, at the suitable location, ideally, we wouldn't have these restrictions that we've only had to put in place because it's the square peg, round hole, you know, situation. But again, it would require going through a process, you know, to, that's not, we're not gonna, you know, the number of courts and, and, and all of that. But we, because I think we all agree, we really, we want to have good, robust, you know, pickleball play. We want to meet the needs of the players here, we see, we want them to have as much play as possible, you know, within the constraints here of this community. And I just, we don't need to get tunnel vision down the fact that it's at George Rogers and get stuck in this, you know, because that's where it is. I think we need to be a little more expansive again and creative. And I don't even think this is all that, all, all that creative. But we, you know, this notion that it's there, so it should be there. I think we gotta break away from that a little bit and think with some fresh eyes here, you know, given, given everything that we know now. Counselor Raff.
Pickleballers, you're gonna hate this, but as a high-level tennis player, I don't get it. I don't. I, I mean, it, everybody talks about pickleball and then tennis, and it just drives me nuts. However, I will say that, you know, we're striving, as one of our goals in Lake Oswego, to make it, make us a green zone, to make sure everybody enjoys a very athletic and healthy lifestyle. And so what I see at George Rogers is, I take pickleball away. I see the community, I see the health and wellness of our, of our, of the people that live here, and I love that. So whatever gets people outside and sweating and enjoying their friends, I would never stand in the way of. I will say that with the Westlake option, happy to look at it, but we're making a very large assumption that there won't be any pushback from the community over there. And so what happens when we go down that path? I feel like we're gonna start this process all over again with, you know, you know, a lot of conversation again. And so I'm not, I don't put a lot of trust that that's gonna be a very smooth process. So I talk a lot about skate parks, I talk a lot about school-aged children and trying to do what we can to make this a very great place for young families. What I like about pickleball is it allows me an opportunity to talk about how we can get our senior community members out and about and happy and having fun. And so that's something we don't talk a lot about on City Council. Do I believe that both side, or should I say this? Do I believe that those that prefer not to have pickleball near George Rogers or at George Rogers have done all they can to compromise? No, I feel like the pickleball community has done a lot to try to make this work out. So I, and I don't believe in a zero-sum game, I feel like there should be more compromise from those who don't enjoy the sound. I empathize that it's probably not ideal. But to, you know, we've offered to look at covering the courts, and we get emails from those who don't want pickleball, who say it's a noise issue. When we try to solve the noise issue, that's not good enough. We get, so at that point, we have to throw up our hands, like, what do you really want? That's the question I ask myself, is it really about pickleball and the noise? If it is, then you guys would be all about covering the courts. So I believe that with the sound mitigation at Westlake, or sound mitigation at George Rogers, a mandate that says that certain equipment is not allowed, I'm a hundred percent in favor of leaving the courts where they are and leaving pickleball where it is. I don't believe in changing anything, I think it opens up a lot of precedent for future opportunities for people to complain about issues that we, honestly, we should not be involved in mitigating. So I do appreciate all the work the city has done, the staff, and the people on both sides. This is my, just my opinion. But I feel very strongly about it, and we have to be bold and courageous as city leaders. You're never gonna make everybody happy. And it weighs on me heavily to know that there are some people that are looking at or hearing what I'm saying and being, and very upset, I would hate it too. But, you know, we have an obligation as city leaders to do the most good with the time we have, so, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Raff, for Counselor Verdic.
I respect you, Counselor Raff, but I couldn't disagree with you more. I think we've been discussing the importance of how do we live together? How do we compromise? How do we come together? And I think we've made a lot of strides to try to make George Rogers work. But the reality is, it's not working. And I think, I love how Counselor Wenland said, it's about mental wellness versus mental illness. So that makes it really difficult, and I think we need to be careful not to minimize the mental illness that the sound of pickleball causes. With that, I think the good that comes from pickleball is immense, and our community needs to make sure we offer pickleball and have that opportunity. I think not only from a physical, but also a social perspective, it's incredibly important. And I think we have an opportunity to find a better solution that won't break the bank. And that's really exploring Westlake. I think it's also important to note that proximity matters in terms of noise, especially this noise. And if we can use the sound mitigation, and we have, we're a little bit shy of that one hundred and fifty feet, but we're within that recommendation, I don't know why we wouldn't go and try to make this, and try it, and see if it works. For those pickleball players at Mountain Park, they actually might love having a Westlake location, or people who are on the west side of town. So I think some people are gonna like it, and some people aren't gonna like it. But I think when we're dealing with pickleball and the noise aspect, and making sure that we are looking out for everybody, I think we have a potential solution that's gonna be more of a win-win than what we currently have with George Rogers.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Verdic, Counselor Booth.
Yes, I, you know, I agree with counselors who say, if we have, because in the beginning, we asked for, we gave, we gave our staff possibilities to find other sites. If they, we, it's both, like the committee that was working on pickleball said, we are going to have alternative sites. There's Billington, which I have even my reservation in as, because it's across from a...
Retirement.
Yeah, retirement home, you know, you cannot retire. If we don't wanna buzz folks from, why are we going there to buzz retired folks? Who are old, who may be not well? So if we can find, if you think that Westlake is an alternative, because my, all my supporting argument is we cannot stop playing sport for any reason. We are government, we are local, because people are saying, yes, we are living, but the other folks also, they, they get their homes in Lake Oswego to live. And it's not for the people who think, oh, we are a number. I'm not talking, you can be one thousand people, if you wrong, I won't support you. Because, you know, numbers, it does, it matters sometimes, but it's, in this matter, it's not about number, it's about what is right, in terms of good governance, good governance. That's what we are talking about, good governance. We have a park, we are short millions of dollars in what we are looking for, and we are going to invest money when we have a park that we can use by using mitigation and science, because people talk about science. Let's talk about science, about wellness. Two years ago, I went to the pickleball court to celebrate the birthday of George, a gentleman named George, one hundred years, who was so happy and was thriving there. You think it's fair that we tell him, oh, there's no more pickleball, you are going to play in Oregon City? Those are the factors, we are not, I'm not against the neighbors. I talked to my friend Ali who lived there, I have many friends there. It's not about being against people, or, we, we live in a state, in a... When I say state, it means like the way we are living in America, that we always want to have dichotomies, like we create, you know, like us versus them. We, that's, it should not work like that, we are all from Lake Oswego, we all have to love each other. Yesterday was Martin Luther King Junior's birthday celebration. Why should we get, when we wanna build the beloved community, it means we all have to do something, we have to meet together. We, it's very difficult to have our staff, put them there and tell them, you are going to have, I'm pretty sure they know what is right. And what is right is, we, people were playing pickleball for five years before I came to council, pickleball was going on over there. I've never seen this way on the previous council that you were, that people come and say, no, no, no. So we came as council, it's not fair for us that we are put in this situation. We said, in the beginning, I said, no, the neighbors are right, we need to do something. We did something, we reduced the numbers of hours. Pickleball folks, they're five hundred, they say, I'm pretty sure they are not happy. But we tried to do what, what is right, is, okay, guys, you cannot always come anytime, seven o'clock, and play. And we told our staff, find mitigation stuff, they found it. And I just asked, it works. Does it work the way the neighbors want it? Probably not. Does it, the hours we reduce, does it work for the other folks? No. So for me, pickleball has to continue. If you find Westlake, and you found, your studies based on, for example, I do also research or stuff, for example, in a nation of three hundred million is not an example. That's not something we can use as the base of research. For communities that say one hundred and fifty feet, it can be one hundred and fifty and be loud if we don't have mitigation. If Westlake, you think, works, that the traffic, because we talk about that, there's, will, won't be traffic problem, we can meet all the criteria of going to conditional use permit, which is another problem that I personally know. So if we can do it, fine. And even that, we are not gonna cave into neighbors being angry and say, we not doing, we are government, we are doing what is right. People elected us, if you think what we are doing is not wrong, don't vote for us next time. Or recall the City Council. That's the way, we are in a democracy, we represent you here, we say what we think. You like it, fine, you don't like it, fine. For me, George Rogers should stop, continue until we find a viable alternative. If we don't, we keep playing. That's how it should be. And I'm saying that, you know, I'm not, I have no interest on either party, but this is how it should be. Let's play our role as government.
You told me that you, you told me that you dream of pickleball, though.
Yes, yes, honestly, I dream of pickleball, we have, let's face this thing, no, honestly, look, how much money, no, you are right, how much money should we put on our student, on safe route to school?
It was a joke.
But you folks, you have, you have money, you have all the whizel. We are gonna put one million dollars to build a...
Alan, okay, yes.
I mean, come on.
We're gonna do...
I won't vote for that.
Okay, we're gonna have Counselor Afghan has been waiting patiently, and then Counselor Corrigan. Counselor Afghan, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have to apologize first, because my camera, for some reason, is not working. I have, I live in Old Town neighborhood, that's a neighborhood. And I live about four hundred feet from the courts. About three and a half houses between me and the courts, two streets and two alleys. So if the noise from the pickleball gets to our house, it will, it is so damp that it requires a very sophisticated ears to hear that. With all those trees that we have in the neighborhood, I do not hear the noise. My position has always been clear. Last March, I came to you, asking you to close the George Rogers Park courts. And I talked about it long before the election, during the election, and now as a city councillor. If you watch my previous testimony, I am not against pickleball, I am for pickleball, especially with so many different generations who are playing it and enjoying it. But I'm against hurting people mentally or physically. Closure of George Rogers Park Pickleball is about stopping hurting people and putting it someplace else, whether it's Westlake or somewhere else, that does not hurt people. We talk about, let's keep the George Rogers Park open until there is another viable option. Are we saying we're grandfathering in something that hurts people? Something that didn't go through the right process, knowing all the side effects of it, and keeping it open and hurting people? We talk about Martin Luther King. Martin Luther King stood up for the minority whose rights were violated. We are in the same position, we have a minority that need our help protecting them from being hurt. We are the government. But that doesn't give us the right to put people in harms position. We talk about compromising, compromising, saying that instead of sunrise to sunset, you get hurt, now you're going to get hurt only eight hours a day. How, how do we call that a compromise? We now have, today, we had, we heard from two doctors that these repetitive loud noises causes emotional stress. So what else do we need to hear in order to say, we have neighbors who are hurting? We have citizens who are hurting. Let's shut it down and figure out where we can put it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Afghan. Counselor Corrigan.
Well, I see it the same as Mayor Bach and Councillors Verdic and Afghan. But I would add one thing, and that is, we shouldn't think this is just limited to Lake Oswego. I think there's been a lot of information out in the national press, in the Wall Street Journal, and the USA Today, that it's not just us, it's a problem all over the country. It's a wonderful popular sport, but it has to be cited in the right place. And I think that's our challenge. So, so I'm a real outsider, I mean, this is my first month here. But as an outsider, I think I'm kind of an objective observer. And what I've seen over the course of this is this situation has just gotten worse and worse. So I wanna move forward now, however we decide to do it, I think now is the time. And let's move forward to a better future for all parties.
That's right. Counselor Wenland is always saying, we do it the Lake Oswego way, you know? And in that, so we have embarked on this process of investigating options, domes, other locations, all that. And we have the discussion here today, so to move us forward, let me make a motion that we direct staff to explore pickleball play at Westlake, working with planning and the neighbors, and following the process of recommending... and following the process of recommendations of the pickleball, uh, task force. With some urgency, yes. Okay. Is there a second to that?
I second that.
Okay. Discussion. Councillor Wynn.
So we stay at George Rogers until Westlake is rectified?
I'd recommend you take those as two separate motions based on your deliberation.
Yeah, let's just look at George. We have been exploring these different options, domes, other locations, et cetera. It seems like there's some consensus around Westlake being the, the way we can do it right, if you will.
I'll second the motion.
Oh, oh, thank you. Councillor Afghan did second the motion. Thank you.
Oh, I didn't hear him.
The discussion around Westlake.
So I guess the question I have, oh, sorry.
No, like, I'm very clear. If Westlake can work, fine. But for folks also, we have to be very clear. It's a, we, we, everybody has their position and has to respect the other folks. I maintain what I said, that Dr. King talked about the beloved community. This is it. People who hurt also, because this is what we're saying. There are many people, by stopping this court. There are also doctors said that being outside reduce Alzheimer. Some folks are not going outside. So the same, we can be in any position and see reality. It is an ontological debate now. What is reality? You can sit there and say whatever you want about who's hurting, who's not hurting. It's all the perception that you have as a member of your neighborhood. The other folks, they have a view of what is reality for them, what is health, what is something that hurt them too. So that's why we, to build the beloved community, the small talk should stop either side. And either on the dice and on the other players. We are government. We say what is right. We all can stay here and philosophize or say whatever it is. It's an ontological problem and ethical at some, as a point. And everyone has their view of what is reality and what is not. So yes, if we can find an alternative where we are not coming here again and fight, that's a fine.
Okay.
Yeah, for me, it is good, but for me, the court, the game should continue. That's the thing. We cannot stop the people who are playing.
Okay.
Yeah.
Separated. Yes. Thank you, councillor Boop. Councillor Raff.
So can we, can I offer another motion in addition to yours that says we consider Westlake? And while we do that, we keep, sorry, we keep, uh, I know, that's why.
We're gonna talk about it next.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Well, he has the right to make an amendment.
Yeah.
To your motion.
I'd like to make an amendment to say that in, in addition to looking at Westlake, we also entertain a motion to keep George Rogers open during that process.
We, we are gonna entertain that motion after this motion.
Yes, let's do this, yeah.
Okay.
Well, I'm just saying parliamentary procedure.
Okay, I'm fine. John, I'm fine.
I mean, he does have, but he will need a second.
Yeah, we're good. We're good, Joe. Move forward.
Let's move.
Just, I'm gonna make my motion now.
Martian and then we.
That's fine.
Councillor Wynn.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. Are you trying to decouple these two decisions? And if so, your motion is a good one.
Y- yes. We're just looking at one decision at a time.
I think if I can interpret what the mayor's doing is saying, we're gonna pursue Westlake Park.
Yeah.
I do think then after you guys decide about, are we gonna pursue Westlake Park? Then you need to decide, are we gonna keep George Rogers open while we do it or are we gonna?
Exactly.
Exactly.
Yeah, exactly.
Good.
Do you have comments about Westlake?
No, that's fine. I just wanna make sure that councillor Raff knew that he had within the parliamentary procedure, can't make an amendment to your motion.
Yes, you can.
I appreciate that, John.
Yeah, we're trying to be, uh, clear about what we're doing.
And methodical, yeah.
Yeah, methodical.
Yeah, let's go, yeah.
Okay. All right. Um, let's, um, uh, let's call roll and then take a vote on this, with the Westlake.
Mayor Buck?
Yes.
And let's see, councillor Winland?
Yes.
Councillor Embu?
Yes.
Verdic?
Yes.
Raff?
Yes.
Afghan?
Yes.
And Corrigan. Okay, motion passes seven zero.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you. Okay, so now.
Move for German.
Can I make a motion?
Yeah.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that while we move forward with the approved previous motion of entertaining Westlake, that the courts at George Rogers remain open until that time. Do you have a second? Or sorry, that's your job.
Under current conditions, under the current operating conditions. I'll second that. Thank you.
Okay, discussion.
I just, oh, oh, go ahead, councillor.
Was there a second?
Uh, councillor Wynn.
Yes. I just wanna say that, um, in doing so, while there may be an interim period of, um, of work, I think it's important that we support both communities, that we give hope for the neighbors and we give hope for the, um, pickleball community, uh, as well as the, uh, gives us the incentive as a council to, uh, ensure that we work as quickly as we can so that we can solve both issues. So that will give staff and everyone else a, a good, clear direction. And I agree with, uh, Ms. N on, on his, uh, discussion. And, and we know how you feel.
Okay, thank you, councillor Winland. Councillor Raff.
The only comment I will make was during the, the public comment, uh, there were several, maybe it was just one, but several people mentioned the health, the negative health impacts of the noise at George Rogers, which, again, I've said this before, I understand and empathize with, but as they were saying that, I looked up the negative health symptoms, consequences of lack of physical exercise and they're almost, the symptoms are almost identical. So to your point, we have to be very careful about, you know, one person sacrifices, sacrifice, health sacrifices versus another. And so if we're gonna, we gotta do our best to compromise and serve both groups of people if we can.
Thank you, councillor Raff. Councillor Boop.
Yes, I mean, I.
You don't have to say.
No, yeah, I just, no, well, you know, just to say that, like my colleague said, we, the question I wanna ask before I talk is to staff, how long will it take to make George Rogers operational?
Uh, Westlake, you mean?
Westlake.
That, that is dependent on, um.
Actually, I think, let me, let me actually, Kira, as opposed to making you do it, Jessica Newmonalo sat through the entire meeting and probably has the best guess.
Yes.
Oh, wonderful. If we get you flowers or anything, will that help?
A conditional use modification requires, um, a neighborhood meeting, a pre-application conference, neighborhood meeting. There's a public hearing and, most likely, and, um, you know, which could potentially be appealed. So it, it all depends on how the process goes. It could take anywhere from three to six months, depending upon. I mean, that's, that's a rough estimate. Um, it, it also depends on how, I would assume that the, the city would have, be a very diligent applicant. And so if we had incomplete items, they would, you know, uh, address those. But a very rough estimate is three to six months. It's probably more on the longer side, realistically, especially if there's appeals.
Six being a longer side.
Mm-hmm, right. But because it's a, it's, we're in-house, we would have some advantage of scheduling?
Well, the, the scheduling depends on the, the workload of the DRC. And right now, I think we're fine. We haven't had any problems scheduling. But if we got really busy and had a bunch of applications, because, um, the DRC has a hundred and twenty day period for review of applications, it's really hard to put other applications ahead of others, um, in order to meet that, um, that time period. But I.
I just encourage the city not to submit any tree code violations or cutting down trees. It's probably much less the message you're sending.
I mean, the good news is, is that this is a fairly limited scope. So, you know, it's a different from an entirely new park. So that, that works to the advantage on the time too. But, you know, obviously, we would, we would do our best to, to get it through as quickly as possible.
And can I ask a technical question? When you're looking at parking lot, um, spaces, you would be looking at street parking, parking lot, and then the other parking lot that's on, on the other side, um, of the ball field. So it would encompass, from a parking standpoint, because, I mean, we've got to have the same issue with concerts and, and other things, baseball games and, and that type of thing. And I would think, actually, I know, scheduling wise, with the pickleball court, um, use for the, with the pickleball club, it would be used in non-competing times with.
I definitely think the staff will have some conversation about whether additional parking is actually required or not.
Yeah.
To your, to your point. And I, I don't want you guys to get too deep on what your opinion is about that because if you do have an appeal, you'll have to be neutral in doing it.
Right. We would absolutely be neutral.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Just like we are on tree appeals.
Yeah. Okay.
And.
Yo, yes.
That's just the time for land use review. There would be an additional amount of time for us to get under contract with someone to do the traffic and parking study and any other studies that need to be done and also the actual bid and permitting and construction. So.
That's right. If construction's painting lines, I'm sure the pickleball.
Yeah, the construction in this case is.
Well, and we can do simultaneous process for the acquisition of the contractor while we're in land use. That's not. I do take your point though, Kira. For a complete application, we'll have to do the traffic study in advance.
Right.
Yes, and, yeah.
Okay. Um, before we call the roll here, I'll just say, I, we, we now know that a robust city process, like we're talking about here, um, that we would follow today was, you know, that we didn't follow it in regards to George Rogers. So I, I, I cannot support the continued play, as I said at our last meeting. Um, and I think the only remedy we have here, given this lapse, you know, that, and again, I'm not, I'm not pointing fingers or anything. It's just, we did not know, um, is, is putting the courts at George Rogers back to, uh, back to tennis while we explore, um, the better option. So I, I cannot support the continued play.
Mr. Mayor, I've had my hand up.
Oh, I'm, so I don't know, somehow I don't see it. Go ahead.
This, it's, it sounds like we're having that conversation right now. This problem has existed since two thousand and fifteen. And only the last year, the city council has heard about it. And if we were to go through the land use, uh, process, zoning process, parking process, the noise level, all of that, George Rogers Park would not qualify for any of that. So grandfathering in something that is wrong is not a good precedent. We have, we have to shut it down and go find a different place to make it happen. We cannot mentally hurt our residents while we go through that other process. I'm, I'm, I'm not clear why we want to keep the George Rogers Park for pickleball players to enjoy while those neighbors are mentally being hurt. So they have had the opportunity of going playing at other locations, which they can continue doing that while we accelerate these other locations and not hurt anyone else.
Thank you, councillor Afghan. Okay, councillor Verdic.
All I ask is that we move with the utmost urgency on looking at, uh, Westlake because this is a very, um, you know, it's very important that we get these courts up and running because pickleball is so important to the community.
Yeah.
Well, I think you spoke, I, I am fully in favor of keeping present operations going. I mean, I, I think that would be a, I, I don't agree with you can just go play pickleball somewhere else. I mean, I think that's basically saying to people, if your traffic signals, shut the traffic signals down and you just try to kind of figure out how you're gonna drive. I mean, it, um, I think it's irresponsible to shut down, uh, look what we did with the skate park. We disappointed generations of skaters because of lack of action or, um, responsibility for, um, city council. And we heard about those, uh, those situations. And I think, uh, we're compromising, um, and we're moving forward. And as I said at the last meeting, uh, or a couple of meetings ago when we talked about this, this is going at accelerated speed for the Parks and Rec Department and for the city of Lake Oswego. We've had numerous projects that have been in the queue for ten, fifteen, twenty years. And so I think it's, um, uh, you know, uh, we are working as fast as we can. And, uh, and I think that in the bigger picture of things, we know that the courts probably aren't gonna be used for at least two or three months, four months because of the weather. I would hate to, uh, take them out for the summer, but that's my opinion.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Winland, let's go ahead and call the roll. This is, the, the motion on the table is to keep the courts at George Rogers Park open, um, in the meantime.
Mayor Buck?
No.
Councillor Winland?
Yes.
Councillor Embu?
Yes.
Councillor Verdic?
No.
Councillor Raff?
Yes.
Councillor Afghan?
No.
Councillor Corrigan?
No.
Okay, wound. This doesn't pass four three.
Okay.
So our mental health is not.
Ma'am, uh, I move that, um, we, um, I move that we close the courts at George Rogers to pickleball in the meantime and start the process of converting them back to tennis.
I second that.
Question. Councillor Boop.
Yes, I mean, sometime from now, we will realize that we've, uh, we've made, uh, we made a mistake in our governance. And I, I agree with all the people, my predecessor and my friend, Mayor Jack, that we always have to make sure neighbors are happy and that we compromise. And I think in turn, in this matter of pickleball, there has to be some compromise. Folks closed the courts, the hours have been reduced. We did everything. We had mitigation that's based on science that, and that our staff even told us that it's working. But in spite of all of that, we go, because we have a number, we voted against it. If we voted this in December, it won pass. But, and you know, we have a number and we have people who have even interest on this who voted. And I think it's, uh, something that will haunt us in many ways because we are gonna see what's gonna happen for the coming. Because neighbors, like I said, with the people from Palisade, that they cannot prevent us from building sidewalk. It's the same thing. We have to be government. Like, it's very serious what we're doing, you know? And my conception of government is not that we are caving into emotional things or things that's not based on science. Because it's all based on phenomenological inquiries. Folks are coming, oh, I read this as an M.D., I did this. It's not science. Science is, there were decibels higher than, like seventy decibels. We put mitigation, it's fifty. That's science. That's something we can measure. But here says are not something we can measure. So it's fine. I mean, you, I will vote against that motion. Like I said, I don't think that we should close the court like that. Boom, we close it and, you know.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councillor Winland.
And I support his position. That's all I'll say. And I, it's a disappointment that we couldn't come up with a compromise and work solutions because, uh, the Old Town neighborhood said, let's do a win-win. And we're doing a win, uh, win-loss. And to me, that's disappointing, disappointing for the leadership of this city, disappointing for the pickleball community. And most of all, it's, uh, process-related that I think it's just a, um, it's a, I think we have time in our process. We're not looking at a long, long time. at a long, long time, um, and I just, uh, I don't wanna take away something that has been built up over seven years, um, and take that away from, uh, a community that relies on pickleball for, uh, their mental well-being, and for their, um, social well-being, uh, and for their activity.
Mm-hmm.
I just think that's, it'd be kind of like telling people, um, at the end of the football player, um, the, uh, playoffs, that we're not gonna have the Super Bowl, I mean, in the sense that we're just cutting it off. So, anyway, sorry.
Thanks, Counsel Winland. Counsel Rapp?
I go back to what I said earlier, I don't believe that the Old Town Neighborhood Association has done anything to, to act upon the words that they say of being collaborative in the solution, um, at all. I think, as a city council, we've done more than enough, we spent countless staff time hours and time and money on that. Uh, the pickleball, uh, community has, or pickleball club has, um, offered solutions and abided by solutions to reduce hours of play, to allow, you know, we put up sound mitigation, we've offered more sound mitigation, um, and so this just goes to my point, that the Old Town Neighborhood has, um, continued to offer nothing to the solution. I see a reach. And, um, I just, it's disappointing, and I think, not to be hyperbolic, but I'm gonna be hyperbolic in that we are on the absolute wrong side of history here. And, but, you know, we're a minority in this conversation, so it is what it is, unfortunately.
Yeah, it's, it's, it is, I mean, we're in a really tough decision, I mean, honestly, my, my feeling is that it shouldn't have been open there in the first place, and now it's there, and people love it, and they enjoy it, and we're, and we are in a tough spot, but it shouldn't, it shouldn't have gone there in the first place, no one could have known that at the time, and it is important in everything that we do, that we do go through a, a community process, that we involve the neighbors, um, and our end goal here, while folks may not like the decision that we're making today, the end goal is that we have robust play, that's a good hours, it isn't restricted, it isn't putting players at odds with the neighbors, and we're not getting emails about players who feel ostracized, and they don't wanna go there 'cause it's taboo to play there, we don't want that, and we want the pickleball community to be able to have a place where they can play, really enjoy the sport. Yes, it may mean that we have to wait, just like the skate community has had to wait, just like other groups have had to wait for us to be able to fund the resources, um, but in the end, we'll have a much better situation than we have today. Okay, Counsel Verdic.
I think we need to keep in mind that we've been, you say, what have, what has Old Town done? If you're sitting here and you're listening to this over and over and over again, yes, we've reduced numbers, but what are, their only option is to leave their home, and I don't know that that's a fair compromise to say, if you wanna get, you know, remove yourself from this noise, that you need to leave your home. We're not talking about two hours a day, you know, this is, this is, this is bigger, and, and I don't say this lightly, because I really, I, my heart, this is a very difficult decision because of what it means to all the pickleball players, and the value it brings to all of you, um, and that's why I want the city to move with urgency, um, so that we can get play back going and get it going quickly, um, and I apologize for the inconvenience in the short term, finding other courts. Fortunately, unlike the skate parks, which really had to go significantly farther, we do have, uh, you know, our neighbor next door that does have some courts that I've been told are underutilized, um, so in the short term, you know, take advantage of those. Um, in terms of the tennis courts themselves, I think I'd rather see them being used for a purpose than just sitting there.
Yeah. Counsel Rapp.
So, more of a clarification on the process, not the vote, but the process of looking at Westlake. What happens when, if the Westlake neighbors, uh, advocate adamantly against pickleball, where they, you know, just like what we're doing now, or we find that it's not adequate location after, after the research? What, what, what's our next step?
Options.
So, you get rid of pickleball altogether?
I mean, for me, George Rogers is not the right location.
Right, so, it's, I, I hear that, but what happens when?
We would be in the same situation either way.
Yeah, but we know at, at minimum, ideally, we get a great, robust set of courts at George Rogers, you know, that's the ideal situation.
There's, there's a lot, I just, there's a lot of risk, in my opinion, of looking at Westlake, with, at, and closing George Rogers, so.
Okay, um, Ms. Winland, let's call the roll, please.
Mayor Buck?
Yes.
Counseler Winland? Counseler Mboob?
No.
Counsel Verdic?
Yes.
Counsel Rapp?
Nope.
Counselor Afghan?
Yes.
And Counsel Corrigan? Motion passes four three.
Okay, um, thank you, everyone. So, Ms. Bennett, the next step in the process, you and the Parks Department will.
Yeah, we'll, we'll figure out how we're gonna get an application pulled together. I, I do think this issue around sound is gonna be something Westlake neighbors are gonna be concerned about, so that's the other thing that's probably not required by the land use application, that we'll have to try to figure out before we go into.
Well, there were steps in the task force recommended process.
I, I understand, but I think, as many of you pointed out, we're at the time of year when no one's playing pickleball, so our ability to do a sound study and really evaluate the noise is gonna be limited, so we'll, we'll figure it out, we'll, we'll get it together, we'll, we'll meet with planning and get a process, and we'll let you know what it looks like.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you both. Kira.
Kira.
It is Kira. Oh, Kira, okay.
Kira, yes, thank you, Kira, thank you, Evan.
Kira, thank you. I'm never gonna mess that up again. Kira, Kira. Well, I'm writing it phonetically now.
We'll see you in court.
Okay.
Or at least at the voting booth.
On the trial, in court.
Please, we are still conducting business, okay. Folks, um, we now come to information from counsel. I would love to share, the.
By the way, January, what do you?
I would love to share that we had a great MLK Day celebration, Counsel Mboob and I were there, and I wanna thank, um, the organizations who participated in putting that together. We had our folks from Ella for Love, Respond to Racism, African American Women of Lake Oswego, um, Our Lady of the Lake, um, that all worked to, uh, make that event successful, including standing outside in the rain and helping direct the traffic, they did a car parade following the event, it was very nice, um, we had, um, a wonderful music, uh, vocalist who did a phenomenal job, he sings with the Oregon Symphony, um, as well as, uh, DJ Avalanche, who we all love, and other volunteers, so it was a great, it was a great event, a professor from Portland State gave, um, a, a very nice keynote, um, and just thank you to, uh, the city as well for putting that all together. Um, hopefully, everyone has gotten on board with the Board and Commission meetings this month.
Yes, I, I was at the library, the advisory board, and our city manager was a rock star, she did a wonderful presentation that they really liked, and, so, I'm happy to work with the library advisory board, and I hope that, uh, things will happen for Lake Oswego to have a better library and, you know. And I also went to the youth leadership council, we set our goals for the coming year, I didn't put them on my goals, because we are gonna discuss that, I didn't want to cheat on that, and it's going very well, we are preparing a night for the parents, for the trip to Washington, and, uh, yeah, it's a very good group, dynamic, young kids, I think we, there's hope in Lake Oswego, when you listen to those. Yes, thanks.
Okay. That is, if, if anyone is interested in, in March, at the end of March, the National League of Cities Conference in, uh, DC will be taking a group of the youth, and, of course.
When is that?
At the end of March.
The break.
The last week of March.
Yeah, last week.
And then, in, um, February, too, if anyone is interested, um, Greater Portland Inc., of which the city is a member, is doing a best practices, uh, trip, except it's here in, uh, Portland, uh, over three days in mid-February, so we can send the details, I know Counsel Mboob is interested in going, uh, I think Hillsborough, Wilsonville, Metro are, um, I think, three, and maybe, and Portland, I think, are three entities that are, um, kind of hosting, uh, forums during that, but, you know, we can show them how they really do it, you know, we need Lake Oswego representation, okay. Okay, anyone?
Tell them how we're always unanimous.
Ms. Bennett, you have. Oh, I had one more thing.
One more thing.
One more thing. This is our, the last with any prayer in Evan's world, of, of Mr. Boone being our pro temp city attorney, I think we all give him a big thank you for the work that he's done. Yes. I mean, it's, we love working with you so much, that, I mean, it was very, kinda sad to see for us.
Yeah, exactly for us.
Uh, to see our time with you.
It, it's been an honor to serve, again, with the council.
Again.
And I, I have, I, I've enjoyed most of it, you know, I kind of, that's not why I wanna be the, the city attorney, so I've enjoyed the part that I have, and if I can just take, so I appreciate all that, and I just wanna set the record straight, as reported in Lake Oswego Review, the city has not been without a, an attorney for five months.
Yes, no.
In Ellen's article, in Ellen's article, it said, I've just been winging it for five months. No, and I'm pleased to turn over, uh, I, I think, a, a, a good operational system here to Ellen, and I look forward to serving with her.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mr. Boone.
Yeah, thank you.
And our hope is that you don't have to step in again.
Yes.
Hope so.
I mean, I, I will be back in, in a limited capacity from time to time.
Evan will be back to deal with all those evidentiary issues on every kind of land use appeal we have. He and I were talking earlier, I hate those evidentiary things, and he loves them, so it's good that you have Evan and me, because.
And I will bug him a lot on many issues. Take my lessons.
Your Honor, if I could just say, goal setting starts at eight thirty, which for me and Counsel Verdic is the same as saying five AM, or three AM, or midnight, for whichever, those of you who are larks, it's, it's.
Eight thirty, I'm playing.
On Saturday.
Yes.
The Saturday.
No, you're gonna be here in this room.
I will stop at seven, and I will stop seven thirty, have a shower, and.
Please have a shower.
Yeah. Is there a shower here?
Yeah, there is. Um, as you recall, uh, we will be in this room, because, uh, under Oregon law now, we have to provide a virtual option, and this is the only place where we have really great microphones and cameras. Expect to be done between three and three thirty, please get your lunch order in, or else you'll eat whatever Kim orders for you. So, anyway, and if you haven't turned your goals list in to me, I.
For audit.
Tomorrow, tomorrow, or else I decide to make stuff up for you. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bennett, all right. Thank you, everyone. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, Counsel Afghan.
Is there something else we can talk about?